On Harold's connection. Is he at least able to hear us?
I've been, I haven't, I have to touch base with Beverly. I'm not sure, sir.
Yeah.
I know we can, I know we can see at least the person talking and I believe he's pretty sure he was able to hear everyone.
Okay. All right. So it may just be stuck in kind of audience mode as opposed to host. Harold, are you with us?
Thank you, muted.
Is he muted? He is muted on.
Now I am. Good.
Harold, do you have good audio and video?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure you are fully connected. All right. Any other technical issues we're resolving? Guys, Beverly Scott, are we ready to go? All right, great. Well, welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is February 1st, 2021. Burlington's work session this evening will be held via the Zoom platform because of the continuing coronavirus pandemic. This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube at the City of Burlington's YouTube page, youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, our meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having any technical or connection difficulties, we ask that you please contact our Public Information Specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. For staff comments or to address council during the Zoom meeting at the appropriate time, you will be told that you can. You can use the raise hand feature in your Zoom window or star nine on your phone. That'll let our staff know that you wish to speak and you will be called on at the appropriate time. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltudis and I'd like to confirm that all members in persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pertem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
Staff presenting, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman. Inorm City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Here.
Planning Manager Conrad Almedo. Is Conrad with us?
He has not arrived yet, Mayor.
All right. Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Go Sock Puppets!
Very good. Burlington Downtown Corporation Downtown Manager Sarah Beth Hardy.
Here.
PTRC Community Development Director Michael Blair.
Here.
And Burlington Housing Authority Chief Executive Officer Veronica Rebels.
Here.
Very good. And I'd like to recognize if we have with us Anderson Rathburn, General Manager of Burlington Baseball, to share news about their announcement this morning. Welcome, Anderson.
Thank you, Ian. I'm excited to be here. It's just been an exciting day. It's been a whirlwind and yeah, finally excited to launch our new brand and get ready for the 2021 season and beyond. For those of you who don't know, we rebranded here this morning and I believe we have the clip lined up. Do I have time, Mayor Baltudis, to show that?
Yeah.
If you can, I'd like to roll that in for the people who have not yet seen it.
Very good. You should be co-host so you can share your screen now. There we go. Or John's got the screen coming up.
Yeah, John's got me covered.
All right, very good.
We've asked you to put on a short sock, the length most men wear, and Burlington's new mid-length sock. The mid-length uses Lycra in a very special way so it covers your shins, yet can't slip. Can't get that sloppy look. You can't.
Like a no-slip sock, the city of Burlington has always been reliable, dependable, even in unprecedented times. Burlington embraces its past while developing an innovating future. The threads of days gone by are what we use to weave the fabric for a bright and prosperous tomorrow. In the year 2021, we introduce a name for your new baseball team that will link our history with the sport to the industry that not only built our community back then, but will also help to carry us forward.
Hey, everyone, I'm Harold Reynolds. And you know what? Being a former Major League All-Star player, there is a pathway to the big leagues for every player. That's why I'm so excited about what's happening here in the new Appy League. This is going to be exciting. It's going to be great for your community. It's going to be great for your league. And more importantly, it's going to be great for baseball. How cool is it that baseball will be staying in the Appy League?
So the Burlington community's always been about resiliency, innovation, finding ways to adapt. And I think we were hoping for something that would help sell that message for all the people in our community.
We want to provide that fun for your fans and for the community, and we just had a blast working on this project.
This is a monumental occasion for the city of Burlington and Burlington Baseball, and we're so thrilled about this outcome. After talking with many of our stakeholders, our fans, folks near and wide, we're thrilled about what ended up transpiring. And this process and the fun that we had throughout it was any indication about the fun that's about to happen. I think our fans and the entire baseball world is in for a real treat.
This close-knit community was asked to sew together its creative energy to help us create a name that is both unique and defining. You stepped up and poured your soul into it, submitting nearly 1,200 total suggestions.
You know, I sure don't envy the people that have to go through the list of 1,200 names filled with our history.
It's an important job, such a historic event for baseball here in Burlington. They've got to make sure this new team gets started off on the right foot. But I'm just excited to see another Hall of Famer come through here like Jim Tome.
Well, as I was saying, this area has such an amazing history and we want our team to reflect that. I mean, look at how rich our textile history is. That tradition continues even to this day still.
I like where you're going with this. New Appalachian League and this brand new team, we've got a chance to do something that really stands out. Got an idea?
As a matter of fact, I do.
And now, get on your feet. It's time to welcome a team that is sockingly different, arching above all others throughout the world. Ladies and gentlemen, and baseball fans of all ages, the Harrier Burlington Sock Puppets.
So as those amazingly talented sock puppet actors alluded to, there's something crazy special, a crazy special opportunity that we have here to do something unique, to do something special. And I believe that we came up with a brand that does just that. So I know a couple of questions that a lot of people have probably on their mind right now is how in the world did we come to sock puppets? And it's really honestly quite simple. So when we asked the team name, when we did the team name suggestions months ago, and when we were doing our research in this city, into this county, people always said that they wanted something different. They wanted something, actually, one of the city of Burlington's own, Morgan Lasseter, said she wanted to be something shockingly different. So we gave her something sockingly different. And being the hosiery capital of the South for so long, we felt we wanted to honor that history, that tradition, and the fact that socks are still being made in plenty, coming out of this county. I think it just tied in naturally as a natural fit. The coolest thing for me, and I think a lot of people are going to start realizing this when we start releasing a little bit more of the brand. I'd say the brand's probably only 30% to 40% released right now. The question I always ask people that are kind of unsure of, hey, you know, why sock puppets? I'll ask them, you know, what is a sock puppet? What does it mean? What does it look like? And everybody just always says something different. And I think that's the thing that I love most about this brand is, yeah, we have the cool guy, which I named him the cool guy, and then this guy is a real clever name, just the stirrup sock. And it can be those guys, or it can be a train conductor honoring the history of the company shops. It can be a textile mill worker honoring the, further honoring the textile tradition. It can be someone in a lab coat honoring the biomedical industry that we currently have booming in Burlington, North Carolina. The opportunities here with this brand are endless. We wanted something unique. We never want to take ourselves seriously and want to be fun. At the end of the day, we're a baseball team. And I think that this brand really represents what this community means and what this community has persevered through, persevered through, through its history. And I'm really, really excited to share it with all you guys here today. And I'm excited to share it with the community moving forward here as we move on. And with that, I guess, can I ask any questions? Or if anybody has any questions, feel free. Or I can leave my contact information, whatever works best for you guys.
Very good. Thank you, Anderson. Any questions from councilor?
Anderson, when will the apparel be ready?
When will the what be ready?
When will the apparel be ready? When will the kids' shirts and jerseys be ready?
So we have a limited apparel on sale right now. You can go onto our new website, which is mlb.com/apalachian-league/burlington. That's a lot to write down, so I'll have someone put that in the chat if that's okay. But yeah, we do have a limited number of apparel ready. We will be rolling out more and more as we get on these next couple of months.
Very good. Any other questions?
Anderson, when do you think your onsite sales will start?
Our onsite sales?
Of merchandise.
Merchandise. So we do have onsite sales going on right now. We are not advertising that just with the capacity limits with everything going on. We do limit to one person or one family, as long as they're masked up coming through the facility. But we do have them on sale now, but we do not, we're not going to advertise that anytime soon.
Got any other questions? All right. Well, Anderson, thank you for coming out. It looks like John dropped that link in the chat. If anyone wants to race out and get your apparel. It's be hard to resist not placing an order during the middle of this meeting, but I appreciate you all and your work on the team. It's exciting to know that baseball has a future here in Burlington and it's exciting to see the talent that's going to be coming through in future seasons.
Definitely. You said it best. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. With that, we'll move to item A on our agenda, updates on the Burlington Housing Authority, or BHA. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Burlington Housing Authority's Chief Executive Officer, Veronica Rebels. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to quickly update you on what's going on over here in Burlington. On two items. First, the BHA's financial commitment to the Tucker Street and Beaumont Apartments. Beaumont Avenue Apartments, as you recall, Vitus is the developer from Seattle, Washington, that acquired Beaumont and Tucker Street Apartments with the intent on rehabbing them and putting them on a new management. So we were, Burlington Housing Authority was approached to be the issuer of the bond to fund this rehab to the turn of $14.5 million, for which we would receive a 1% issuance fee for $145,000. So at the request of your city manager and discussion with Vitus, we'll agree, they agreed to certain concessions that are described in, I think you have it in your agenda package, what they've agreed to do to improve the quality of life for the residents of those two properties. Now with the approval of my Board of Commissioners, we have also pledged $15,000 of that issuance fee to further this objective. I've directed my staff to contact your, I believe it's Youth Solutions program staff or any other desert need that you would like to coordinate the utilization of these funds. But we hope that our collaboration with your staff would hopefully enlarge our territory and include Burlington Housing Authority because I think if we can group all three properties together, we might conceive some grant funding in reaching the more youth. Or as you know, BHA's mission is not just housing people, but empowering people and moving them to the next level. We believe in changing lives, just like you want to do in those two communities. So with that said, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, myself and my staff, we would like to thank the City Council for all of your support of our programs and we look forward to continuing to provide affordable housing in the city of Burlington and to move our residents to the next level of self-sufficiency. Any questions before I move on to RAD?
Questions from council?
I'm presuming, Veronica, that resident services includes what you're talking about with the youth. Is that what you're?
Okay. Yeah. Now, I mean, the city can use the funds however they choose, but I assumed that it was going to go towards some youth programming. But now choose to use it. All right. And then as far as the RAD program, if you remember, RAD stands for Rental Assistance Demonstration. And I won't go through all of the history, but under the Housing Authority, well, our Housing Authority, we intend to convert our entire portfolio to RAD, which means moving from the public housing platform to the Section 8 funding platform in order to go out and leverage debt on our property to rehab our aging housing stock. So our scope of work will be similar to what you were told that they were going to be doing at Beaumont and Tucker Street. We, at the time that we started this journey, the rents were not going to be high enough to do everything on our wish list. But a new PH notice came out last week, which now says that we can do another 20% of our portfolio with fair market rent. So we're going to do hopefully 74 units under the fair market rents, which will give us a little bump in rent. And therefore, we can get three to four million more dollars of loan proceeds to do additional work. So while my team is working on trying to come up with what that will entail, working with our architect, we thankfully, if you guys approve, we've also applied for some home funds to do two particular work items in our elderly site here at my office, Willow Creek. And with that and this additional two to three million that we may be able to get from the additional higher rent, we hope to bring about $18 million of construction to the city. Our timeline is at my Thursday meeting this week, I will ask the board to approve a general contractor. And if they do take our recommendation, he will then begin working with our architect to define, to finalize the scope of work. And then our goal, and it's quite aggressive, would be to close by August. That's depending on HUD and depending on COVID. But as soon as we can get to closing, we will start construction. It should take 20 to 24 months to complete. And as you know, the impact to the community would be a sustained affordable housing for the next 30 years in the east side of Burlington, improving its curb appeal and updating the housing. We also hope to create some job opportunities for residents within public housing and the surrounding city. Section 3 residents are contracted that we selected as very proactive in trying to hire low-income people to help with these jobs. And they are amenable to keeping them on if they have the skill sets after the job is completed. So we're excited about what we're about to embark on. I can't wait to break ground. Any questions?
Very good. Any questions from council?
I looked up some information on this and apparently there have been a number of studies done on RAD since it began. And it says that it has a mostly positive, I mean, highly positive effect on the residents, that they're not complaining about it or feeling displaced. So that's good news. I like to hear that.
We won't be displacing anyone. We will be relocating and as we try to create vacancies, we want to try to move them around within our community so that they don't have to go outside of public housing and keep them on-site as much as possible. We'll be working with the general contractor to see how we can do that. And if not, we will move them out either to hotels or rent apartments that we can recycle people in as we move them in and out until we get their units rehabbed. But all of that will be at no cost, just inconvenience, but no cost to the residents.
Very good. Other questions from council?
Veronica, what's the overall timeframe for this though, in terms of start to finish?
Well, as I said, we would like to finish, close on the loans in August, but that is aggressive. But we do expect to be able to close by the end of 2021 and then construction will start immediately after that. We've done all of the work on the front end so that once we submit our plan, which I have a meeting scheduled on the 18th with HUD, and once we're good with that and they're agreeing with everything that we're planning to do, we will then submit our RAD application. We will await for HUD to submit CHAPs. There's always these acronyms. But it's a contract for housing assistance payments. Once they issue that, then we have to submit a financing plan. All of that will be bump, bump, bump. And hopefully have it all done and just waiting for HUD to set a closing date. This is for FHA financing. And so as soon as we can get a closing date, we will start. The general contractor is ready to go as soon as we can make everything line up. And it's a 20 to 24-month construction period.
24-month construction.
Yeah.
So basically 22 and 23.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? I did have one for you, Veronica. I know this jumps out to me in my mind when I think of Tucker Street Apartments as kind of transit connectivity. I know that's an area where there's some pedestrian improvements that could be made. I was curious if y'all have been able to coordinate any infrastructure improvements around sites as you've been going forward with these?
We haven't, we haven't gotten that far. You know, we have some transit stops in our community. I think there probably needs to be one more on Maple Avenue, but we have not had any discussion about that.
But I know Mike Nun is on the call. I don't know, Mike, if you have any kind of updates on some of the infrastructure around these projects?
Yeah, we currently are at, I think all of them except for the Maple Avenue property, and that's simply an issue. We have a bus stop. We don't have a shelter there. It's just down from the BHA property. But definitely we'll work with, you know, to coordinate and put something better. We have several at this property at Willow Creek. We have one on the backside on the one island too. So there's actually two where we're talking about here. But yeah, we're definitely could locate a bus stop or a shelter once the construction is done.
As far as pedestrian improvements around those sites as well? I know Tucker Street has a pretty solid dirt path. It's been worn along the street there. Wasn't true.
Along, I mean, along the frontage of, near the apartment site, the Tucker Street Apartments. Yeah, we could look at that.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I mean, there's only so many very clearly worn, well-worn, heavily used paths like that. And with the improvements coming to that, that site in the tune of $18 million, $7 million or so to that site, I think that'd be a good upgrade as well as far as connectivity for those residents, to give them a safe walking route.
Sure. Glad to look at it.
Any other questions for Veronica? I know these are exciting. I'm looking forward to other affordable housing development projects coming in our community. And Veronica, I'd appreciate if you could stick around for item B on our agenda. We're continuing to talk about housing and I think some of it will be relevant to you and we'd love to have your feedback on it as we discuss it.
All right, will do.
All right. If there are no other questions, then we will move to item B, the Home Program and CDBG Affordable Housing Development. And I'll recognize our PTRC Community Development Director, Michael Blair. Welcome, Michael.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and Council. I will need to project or share screen here if we could allow me to do that.
As a host and there you go.
Okay.
I've got you. Coming up now.
Thank you. From beginning. There we go. All right. Just give you a little overview of where we are. And it is an interesting agenda that you all have and it's very exciting things that the Burlington Housing Authority is up to. I mean, that's a really amazing transformation that could happen. But basically, if you remember back in October at the work session, we talked about RFP, Home Program Funding, CDBG Funding. You know, the PTRC has been brought in to help administer this funding until an administrator can be hired and put into place and trained and up to speed. One of the things was an RFP for the existing home program balance, as well as program income balance, which had, which had grown a bit over the last couple of years. So in November, it was November 13th, we put out a request for proposals for development. The request for proposals was basically to be used for gap financing or full financing of affordable housing development, rehabilitation, or the creation of. And basically, this was to assist with gap financing or with lower cost financing for these projects to reduce their debt load essentially. And that's what the home programs generally use for in most places. They have access to home. And again, four applications were received. On January 7th, we used the Neighborly software, which Burlington adopted, I think a little before the PTRC did. But I think Burlington, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, PTRC, everybody's using it now. So, but the applications came in online. They were scored. They were reviewed for eligibility, for the reasonableness of the request. And from that, all four are going to be recommended for funding through that, through these programs. The first, and this is just going to kind of go into them now, is Forest Hill Meadows. That's a tax credit project. Credit since 2019, state tax credit application for 100 of the units will be targeted towards area workforce, excuse me, workforce housing. And what that means is, a few years ago, the state started allowing tax credit projects to have rents that were somewhere between the 60% fair market rent, 65% fair market rent, and the 80% rent. So allowing people that were working to have a little more flexibility to live in new, energy-efficient, nice new apartments, which was a good move on their part. Basically, what they requested is $638,000. What they'll do with that, this is going to be used for the development of the property. Exact items will be negotiated. Once we contract and put the money into play, the city will basically gain 20 units. They're 40% units. To give you an idea of just incomes that we're talking about, and you know, most of the rental properties, the two that we have will be at 50% or less. And that, we're basically a family of fours, $31,100 a year for a single-person household. That's $22,500 a year. You know, for what's called low-income, that 80% is $35,950 for one, for a one-person household and $51,350 for a four-person household. So that's the numbers. And the eligibility is oftentimes elderly, disabled, fixed incomes. I mean, that's who we're trying to serve with these funds. So either way, Forest Hill Meadows, 20 units at 40%, 52 of the units are at 60% and eight units are at the 80%. So it's, it's, it trends lower income, but they do have those middle, little low-income rents available. 10% are going to be designed for mobility impaired and disabled tenants, and the request was $638,000. We were recommending approval. The site, if you're not familiar with it, is basically, best way to describe it, you know, it's a few blocks west of downtown and south of 70. It opens up, it'll open up to Forest Hill. It's bounded by Smith School Road on the south side of the property. As you can see in this map, it is surrounded by basically retail jobs. I mean, that's a lot of them. There's medical, there's, there's retail, Supercenter, you know, Harris Teeter. So the site is also residential around that too. So it's really compact in that general vicinity. It's also, it's not very far from, from Element's Crossing. It's probably about a mile and a half, two miles from Element's Crossing, if I guess right. So that's Forest Hill Meadows. And during this, if you have any questions about any of the projects, please let me know. I can answer any questions that you may have. The second project is, you just heard about, you know.
I do want to linger on that, that site for just a moment.
Oh, absolutely.
Go back. So I appreciate you bringing up the proximity. I think this is a really good example project. I'm particularly excited that it came through in this round of funding. Because, and for Veronica, when, when we've been talking about affordable housing over the last couple of years, I don't know, do you have any of the elevation drawings, Michael, in your PowerPoint for the site?
Not in the PowerPoint. That was in the council agenda packet.
So it's a two-story development and it very much mirrors, if you look at the elevations or the overall layout, site plan, a lot of what we're seeing for fair market housing projects from the private sector, which I think is particularly exciting when we talk about kind of respecting human dignity and worth. And when we talk about kind of uh respecting human um dignity and worth um and building projects that uh housing developments that really fit the nature of the community. I mean, I think driving by this site when it's complete, it'll be indistinguishable that it's affordable housing compared to some of the other uh housing developments right nearby. And that's, that's really what I want to see with the future of affordable housing in our community. And so I think that's a, a big takeaway. I'm excited that we got a project like this uh in this round. Um, I did have a question about connectivity. Specifically, you pointed out there's grocery stores, there's retail employment around the site. But there's not necessarily walkability other than walking on non-sidewalk streets. And I was curious if in the development, they were, they were planning any way to more directly access the Holly Hill Mall property through the backside of that unit? Or uh if there's something that we could work through, maybe Mike Nun, um, increasing connectivity there?
Yeah, I do not have that at this point. I can certainly ask. But I, I want to go back to your point and I think it was an exceptional point. Tax credit properties uh which have been in place since the eighties essentially, since the early two thousands have looked better and better and better. They're energy efficient. They look like market rate. The quality has shot through the roof over the last few years. And I think your point is you're not going to be able to tell that this is an affordable complex when you drive by it. It's going to look like a market rate apartment complex. And that's the beauty of these, since that whole sense of space, you know, when you create nice things, oftentimes nice, nice things come of it. I mean, you know, it's just improving the environment and, and making, again, giving the opportunity for folks to obviously, you know, not necessarily have to drive to work, or if they did have to drive, it's not going to be a very far drive. So.
Yeah, the fact that there's much for retail, grocery, employment, all within a mile or less of the site is, is fantastic. Yeah.
Yes, I'll, I'll ask and I'll talk with Mike. I'll talk to the developers to see if they have any and get back to you through Mike about connectivity for, for pedestrian connectivity.
Yeah, especially with the fact that ten percent of the units is ten percent or ten units that are mobility focused. I mean, it always pains me to see someone in a wheelchair having to like wheelchair on the street when there's not a sidewalk. And so i- if we're benefiting from having mobility focused units in this site, I really want to make sure that those residents have the ability to safely connect to the surrounding community without having.
Would be a very good goal.
So.
I think we could talk about that just a little bit, mayor. With the site and I can share it if you'd like. I need access to share it, but um.
Mike, would you mind if Nolan brings up his screen? For just a moment?
Is that going to mess you up?
Unshare real quick.
Yeah, just don't share yours, Michael.
Yeah, I just think this is, again, when we normally talk about affordable housing, we talk about kind of these grand visions and kind of out there concepts, but this is a, a very nice grounding of a lot of those design factors into the community. So.
That shows your site. That also shows your elevation you were referring to earlier. Uh, just real quick, I mean, we did, this was done by uh Wright, the, you know, according to the district zoning that was there. We do have with the UDO, one of the reasons you're going to have a nice elevation is it, it has multifamily design uh standards that we didn't have in the past. So that, that helps. In terms of pedestrian connectivity and Mike and his staff work diligently with uh the design folks to try to make sure we have uh pedestrian active uh access uh throughout the site. There's also a required greenway that's going to be constructed. A portion of uh, as you see right here, I'm pointing to it. Hopefully you can see that. And then connectivity to that, we did not have any uh regulations that would, even though it was discussed to require uh access beyond that. But that was something that was discussed and we just weren't able to uh require them to do that in the UDO. So but certainly we can reach out, have some more discussion and just let you know we, we are limited in that capacity in terms of what we can require. Is that fair, Mike? Anything else to add to that?
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Also keep in mind, we'll most likely put a bus stop at this location as well. The, the uh, the link bus goes down Forest Hill currently already. So we, most likely we'll put a bus stop here as well.
Nolan and Mike, with that, that greenway, obviously it is, should be part of the greenway plan, hence why it's required on this development. Is where would the connectors be for that back over to other sites like Holly Hill Mall? And is there the ability for staff to kind of, now that we have a pro uh development that's building a piece of that to start to reprioritize some of those other pieces of that greenway to improve the connectivity in that general region?
Yeah, I mean, Mike, you can speak to that, how it connects back to international.
Well, we've got, we've also got a, a development with the, the redevelopment of the flow dealership. They're going to be building a section of greenway all the way down to the, some of you may recall the old bank that used to, that, that used to be there just opposite of the mall still. I think the drive-through is still there. So we'll have that and then there'll be a, there'll be a missing segment, but we are getting two points of green, two sections of greenway built and there'll be a segment in the middle that's still needed. But it, it's a network developing. I mean, we're seeing things happen. Uh, I, I talked to a lot of developers. Obviously they're connecting to, to nothing, but we're starting to see things develop and connect just by getting a piece at a time. So I think it's a positive thing, especially with this one coming in, flow uh up at the corner. And then we'll have a, a, a section that's, that could be prioritized to be built and make a full connection of an entire segment. Yeah, Nolan, there you go.
Believe there's a piece that uh through the floor that's coming about right there, Mike. Is that correct?
Correct, that's correct.
Okay. And then with this side, you've got another piece effectively somewhere in this range. So um.
That'd be that section kind of where the parking that is there. That's the gap now.
Correct.
Yes, I think kind of like what we've done with um the improved bicycle and greenway plan and Mike, your work with transit, filling in gaps around the community. That's, we used to have these sidewalks to nowhere um and kind of spots where it were really intuitive that there should be a sidewalk connection and there wasn't. And so I, I'd like to make sure that our, our priority plans, when we have new opportunities, like what y'all are talking about here, that we make sure that we go back into those plans and recognize that change in opportunity and try to elevate creative solutions to make that a connected network. Because we never know when that infill site is going to hit. Obviously, it's exciting to see a lot of movement over there right now. Cause as long as I've been a resident of this community, that's been a vacant lot back there. And folks have told stories about old tomato fields and stuff growing back there. So uh, it's good to see progress, but let's make sure that we keep the, the bigger perspective going. So, Michael, I think you can probably bring your screen back up.
Alrighty.
Counsel, any, I, I talked a lot there. I'm excited about this, this project because again, it, it gives us like a model to point to that's in our community versus uh previously we've pointed to things that might be in Durham or in Salisbury. Um, and so I think it helps our planning department be able to say, um, look at that affordable complex. That's kind of what we want to see more of in the community when we've got one here on our, our soil. But any other council questions on the Forest Hill Meadows site? Veronica, any questions from, from our comments on that? I, I think when we've talked to BHA previously about RAD, in my mind at least, has been when we look at some of the existing structures, it's one thing to just put new siding on and renovate the interiors. But uh, it, it doesn't go the whole distance to really making it look like a, a standard market rate.
Right.
And so.
I'm very envious of this project. This is exactly what I wanted to do. Uh, wish I could have gotten that tract of land, but I mean, it's, it's perfect position for um the QAC for getting the point source for tax credits. I'm assuming that is what the developer wants to use in addition to the home fund. Uh, and you're right, uh, even with the scope of work that my properties needed, I couldn't get all of the facade changes that I wanted to so that it would not look like public housing. I wanted it to look market rate. But we're going to do the best we can with the dollars that we have to try to change the aesthetic so it doesn't look like, you know, the old public housing. And we are definitely wanting to do some of this same type of work, but we need to bring those same amenities. You know, you hear this on the east side of town, if that's where I have to work in, in the tract of land that we have on Church Street. We need to be able to breathe the same type of amenities so the residents here can have access to those same things that they get in West Burlington. That these people are going to do.
Yeah, and I'd love to see that. Um, and so my, my challenge to, to you all is to leverage the fact we've got Michael and PTRC on board now doing the work that he's presenting. I'd love to see how we can draw upon all their knowledge and experience around the region um and get really creative on putting together the financing, especially that gap financing to enable you to, to stretch further and provide that kind of higher quality uh experience and respect for human dignity uh and developments that fit the, where Burlington is developing towards, um, to make our neighborhoods more cohesive. So let's, I would love for us to strive further, especially on some of those future redevelopments on BHA properties. So. All right, any other questions on Forest Hill Meadows? Otherwise, Michael's got three more. All right, Michael.
Well, let, let's, let's move right into the next application, which is ta-da, uh, the Burlington Housing Authority. So basically, if, if, I, I don't know if everybody knows where Willow Creek is, but it's basically um North Ireland Street, Fairfax, Virginia, and south of Church on kind of the northeast side of downtown. I'm not sure if you've been there, but um it was built in nineteen seventy-one. It's one of the, part of the portfolio that the RAD conversion that, that the Housing Authority is going to do allows them to, to access funds that they never had access to as public housing units. And that's the beauty of it. Because the Congress never really gave them the ability to improve the projects once they were built. So this allows them to, to go for bond money and, and maybe a home program funding like we're using here to actually reduce the hard debt that's on the property. So they uh basically what we'll be doing, um, you know, it's going to be used to rehabilitate the property in conjunction with the funding that the housing, the Housing Authority is going to access. The exact items, you know, we're going to probably negotiate that, but they're currently bathrooms and flooring. But you know, if we have a planning process that says we're going to do some other thing, I mean, this is, there's flexibility here. So and that's the thing to remember as we go forward. And the conditions basically is, you know, complete the RAD conversion. The grantee would actually be the Burlington Development Corporation, which is the five oh one C three, uh, which is eligible to be a grantee for home program funding. And then the um, the actual ask is, is four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Now be combined with their other funding to bring approximately twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars a unit into making, to bringing these nineteen seventy-one units up to, you know, as close as we can get to twenty twenty-one standards. So the site itself, you know, you can see here Fisher Street and, and Church. And it's just right, uh, kind of, it's been there again since nineteen seventy-one. But there's, it, it's not a huge amenity rich area, I don't think. But at the same time though, it's a, it's a quiet neighborhood. It's been serving elderly and disabled clients since, you know, for fifty years. Even after the RAD conversion, um, there'll be a preference for elderly and disabled residents to stay there. So continue serving that population. Do we have any, any questions about this particular side?
Any questions from council on the Willow Creek site?
Is anybody else having trouble uh hearing, Michael? It goes in and out.
I am occasionally.
Okay, let me try something. I apologize for that.
This one only fades out for a couple of seconds and then comes back in, but does get very quiet.
That's better.
Well, you'll have to wait a while to see if it comes in and out, but we'll give that a shot. Any questions on? All right, keep rolling.
Alrighty. The next is a CDBG application. That was for Apple Ridge Development, which is.
Michael, it's still fading in and out.
Okay. Not really sure what I can do. I just changed uh from a MiFi to my personal uh Wi-Fi. So maybe it's the distance, maybe Winston-Salem is just not on the internet today. Should I continue on trying to do it this way?
Yeah, I think you can continue. We can generally still hear you, but it gets pretty quiet. So if anyone misses something or feels like they want Michael to repeat, please just kind of let him know.
Yes. And basically this is going to be infrastructure for um a development that's already started. The project uh is, you know, Curry Hayes Homes is the grantee. It'll be used to develop the property. If you don't know where the location is, it is just a few blocks north of the downtown. It's just south of North Park. It is uh Apple Street's the north boundary. Baldwin Road is on the east. And um basically the project will extend north Saint John Street through to Apple, which would then allow the development of the entire parcel. And what we're looking at really is, and, and this is not the full funding that they've asked for, but it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of CDBG funding, which is an eligible activity. And they will be doing um prob, some version of road curb and gutter is my guess. So we'll work that out in the contracting phase. Did everybody hear that?
Yeah, you're pretty solid for that one.
Okay, good.
Council on this one? I know I'm, this is a, a good infill site, uh, and so I'm glad that we're able to help out with this one. Particularly, I know as far as connectivity, um, like there's some good opportunities here to connect some existing dead ends and, and side streets. So.
And you're looking at basically houses that will be affordable, that households under eighty percent, what I mentioned earlier. And right now the units are for a eleven hundred square foot or a hundred and thirty-nine nine. Uh, the twelve hundred square foot are one forty-nine nine. So you can't get a house like that other than Habitat, that, that's going to be a new house that's built, that's energy efficient, safe. And, and, and has, well, I've, I've been in it, good closet space, which is important. Always. My house doesn't have that. It was built in nineteen twenty-two. But um, you know, I, I think that they're a good design and its plans are under TRC review right now. There's a typo on bullet number four. It should be Burlington CDBG program fund request, not home. That's a different fund source. The site itself, you see right here. Baldwin is on the north and south running road here. Uh, Apple Street is the east and west running road. And then Saint John's comes up through here and it's there's some other plans that they're looking at with roundabouts that are in this general vicinity of the property. Is that correct, Nolan?
Coldest tax.
So, a coldest tax coming off Baldwin, correct.
Yeah, so when it's done, I think it's going to be a really nice neighborhood, good connectivity and a good place for starter homes or long-term residents.
And it's walkable to our investments over at North Park, so.
A quick shout out though, um, American National Bank has been, created a very good relationship with Curry Hayes Homes in this financing, the construction. I'll be honest, I haven't seen a lot of local banks being that proactive. So uh, I thought that'd be nice for everybody to hear that you've got a very proactive bank here that's helping with affordable development.
That's good to hear. Any council questions on Apple Ridge Development? I know they've done some work um with Curry Hey Home, Curry Hey Ho, Hayes Homes on uh around there. Uh, and so they're excited to be able to move this forward. It's always been, I think, part of their long-term plan.
There, those houses are really very attractive too, the ones that they've already built.
They are.
Have some different architectural features that are nice. Have some different architectural features that are nice.
All righty.
Yep, go ahead.
The, the last item that we have is the Alamance County Habitat, and that's again, CDBG funds and bullet number four is again, and correct, it says home, it's CDBG, different fund source. Don't know how that made it through. We have a very good process here. But either way, again, it's Habitat. They're basically looking at nine. Photo of their more, one of their more recent houses in your account, in your agenda packet. Basically, it's just a portion of the public street and sidewalk construction. They don't have site plans at this point. So what we're going to do is I'm probably going to work with them to try to find a good when use architect to actually provide those for them. So, you know, they need, we need to get those completed and embedded by your planning and staff essentially within the next sixty days or so, whatever is reasonable to try to help them with this. And just to give you an idea where this is. Basically, it's north of the Apple Ridge property. It's about two blocks or so north of Sharp Road as the corner of Glen and Austin Roads. Brass Field Meadows, that large new development, market rate development is directly. So when we get down to the site, you can see that, where that giant empty space is above the pin, which is the actual parcel. That's the Brass Field Meadows Phase Two, I guess. I'm not sure what it is, but it, it's under construction now. Only residential area or mostly residential area. It'll be a nice addition to the area for affordable houses, which will be, if you look at the Habitat prices, the way they run, they'll be a little more affordable than the Apple Ridge units, which are very affordable.
Very good. Counsel, any questions on this Habitat site?
This is a particularly good site because there are some criminal elements that meet around that area, so it'd be nice to see that cleaned up and, and have some good housing in there.
Yeah, I know. I've talked to residents up in there about, there's been some issues with dumping and so it's good to see it getting redeveloped.
I've always been happy with the Habitat developments I've been a part of in Greensboro and some other areas. They're generally very well-maintained over the years and there's a lot of sense of ownership in them. So I think that, that will be a definite improvement.
Very good. Any other council questions?
I have a general question. If any of these projects don't go forward, does this money go back into our balance, our income balance? Or is there a deadline for using those funds?
CDBG funds do have some spending requirements on them, but there's also other programs that are being funded with your CDBG program. So they don't have a direct date that they have to be completed. The, the sooner the better, just simply because it's, you get the money out into the community, serving the people it's supposed to be serving. Regardless of the statutory or regulatory deadlines, the home program funding is part of a consortium. It, it is a balance that's higher than it should be, and we do want to get that money into the community and into construction as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
You know, the, the home funds, I totally understand. I, I just want to be clear on the CDBG fund. Is, is this money coming out of our allotment of CDBG that, what was it, four hundred and fifty thousand, give or take? Is that where we're talking about pulling this from?
Yes, it is.
So Harden, my question, my question on that is, we've, we've sort of committed some other projects and pulling, using some funds from CDBG towards other projects. How is that going to look from a, from a balance sheet standpoint versus some things that we, we've always used this for various projects, like for instance, we've, we've pulled some of that for the North Park renovation, things like that. We've, we've kind of went to that fund when we needed to for broader community projects. This seems to be, and Harold, you have some, some history with how we've used this in the past. This seems to be a little bit of a, of a deviation.
In the past, the, a large majority of the CDBG money has been done for public projects that would be open and utilized by the entire population, not just housing for a limited number of people. Now, obviously, in other communities, this has occurred some, but this is a deviation from what's been done in the city for a number of years.
Nolan, you want to, you want to respond to that? You, you might, you may have the, all the data in front of you.
Well, just generally speaking, our CDBG budget for this year, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, you know, we break those funds down into, you know, public service agencies, public infrastructure. And so we allocated roughly, I'm going off of memory here, three hundred and eighty thousand for public infrastructure this year, and there was one piece as part of the annual action plan that was identified. I believe it was the Dream Center of, they had an allocation, but there was still a balance in that annual action plan that showed, I think it was three hundred and fifty, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars for public infrastructure projects. And so they weren't designated at that time for specific, for specific projects. We were just putting them in that bucket so that we could allocate those as needed. When we went through this, the process with council, I guess, couple, well, I guess it's been a few months now. We talked about, you know, possibly using those CDBG funds to help with infrastructure on affordable housing development projects. We felt like that was, that was kind of the direction we were, we were heading based on the input we, we had. So that's, that's kind of how we got, how we got here and where these recommendations are coming from, if that helps.
Yeah, I mean, I think, and I do recall that conversation vividly, specifically with some of the other funding sources and moving in that direction as well. But to deplete such a large amount of those funds for two projects, that's going to be, at least one's more narrow in scope than the other. That just seems like a, a, a lot at my, at, at first glance. Obviously, when I looked at this, I was under the impression that they were home funds. That, that, that this was going to be pulled out of, or I would have had a different thinking cap on, so I'm just kind of shooting from the hip on it a little bit.
I got you. Mike, what do you want to talk about home funds that relates to infrastructure?
Yeah. Basically, when you use the home funds for, let's say, you know, the Habitat project or the Apple Ridge project, it, it puts a lot more restrictions on the developer because the home program is simply a more restrictive federal fund. CDBG has most, in most places, is, is used to help facilitate the development of affordable housing. You know, we did that in Greensboro while we were there for several years, but it, it's just one of those, one, and I'll go back to the balances that you're looking at right now. They are fairly high, and I think it's important that we get the money into A, eligible activities, but B, you, you know, into construction in the community, which is, you know, jobs and then affordable housing. But, you know, I, I do understand that. I, I think a lot of times cities get in a, a groove of doing the same thing, more or less, over and over again, and then that's, everybody does that. This is a diversion mainly because of the higher balances that we saw when we came in here and back in September, October.
We, we've always, we've always allocated all of that money typically. You know, I don't, I don't know of any year where we said, let's not spend it. I think we've, we've just found, to Harold's point, we founded more, we founded needs where it would have more of a, of a broader impact on the community. For instance, like North Park, I'll come back to that project in and of itself. That project could not have happened without CDBG. At the, at certainly at the scope and level that it did. So in, you know, in looking over the document, I mean, if we're, if we're being asked as an action item on this and looking over the document, it, it looked like these were going to be home funds, which was a different thought process for me. Now that we see that they're shifted to CDBG, I would want to take a, a little bit more comprehensive look at that personally.
Yeah, I'd also like to understand from the city's standpoint, other projects that have been posed that would qualify for CDBG also. Again, the housing is, is important here, obviously. But I'm, I'm also concerned that, you know, I, I think the philosophy has been to try to invest that money into projects where a substantial, a higher percentage of our population could utilize it for public purpose. It might not be any of those projects out there now. I, I can't, I don't know that. In terms of what's on the capital improvement plan or wherever it may be, but that certainly has been something that's been thought about in the past. I'm a little surprised that we wasn't told of this either before this, quite frankly. Maybe I missed it in one of the presentations, but I, I do believe that it would have been beneficial if we'd had more of an explanation on this going in.
So I understand that that just two of the projects are CDBG, right, and each one is a hundred and fifty thousand. The rest is all home funds. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Michael, do we have a handle on the, the investment made by the other partners on those CDBG projects? Obviously, the hundred and fifty doesn't necessarily cover the whole project.
Yes, actually, the, the Habitat development has their own funds that they will complete the infrastructure for the entire development with just the CDBG funds, basically helping finish that out. They'll be putting probably, you know, another four or five hundred thousand dollars out of their own money, which is matched for CDBG, which is a good thing. They're, they're participating with the funding. With Apple Ridge, like I said, they have a very good relationship with the bank, American National. So this will help give them some, some, again, lower interest hard debt, would be a good way of saying it, that they'll be able to, to complete a little more effectively that, that full development. So each one of the projects that's funded, the, the funding provides what you call gap financing or lower interest financing essentially for projects that they can get other funding for, but this is less expensive money. Then being CD, community development block grant funding or home program funding, the intention is for, especially home program, is housing-related type activities for low-income people. And for CDBG, it is generally speaking, it can be used for public infrastructure in, in what's called a low-to-moder income area or census tract. Or it can be used for public services like a homeless shelter or some other shelter like that, or rehabilitation of housing, or the infrastructure for the development of affordable housing. So those are kind of the generalized activities that you can do with CDBG.
So what, what's included in my packet? I've got a, Mr. Butler, Mr. Owen's question. I've got a spreadsheet. Nolan, I don't know if that made it in the packet or it's just. Nolan, do you have that eleven by seventeen spreadsheet? It is in the packet, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Nolan, can you pull that up on screen share? Maybe that'll help a little bit.
Well, I think that, I think the, the confusion, Harden, is on the, on the headout presentation, it says Burlington Home Program Request. So you, you, you look at multiple pieces and you get a couple of different things and we're, I've looked at the spreadsheet. I mean, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, it, it has some details on, in the notes. It's, it's actually not in the grid, so it's a little bit confusing to follow the lines, but they, they are infrastructure investments, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly, Nolan.
They are.
We're building public, I mean, each of those projects, we're building public streets, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
A good example, the Curry Hayes project. You know, when you look at the extension of St. John, it's about six hundred feet. You've got to do the roadway, you've got to do the curb and gutter, sidewalks, utilities. And when you add all that up, Todd's looking at this, but it, it appears that what they're asking for is a, a partial amount that it would take to construct that and provide those utilities. I don't think you can do that for what their request is. I will say on the Habitat, we don't have a detailed plan at this point like we do for the Curry Hayes Home. It's a smaller site. I'm not really, we're not really sure exactly until we get more detail how, how they would be able to utilize those funds there. But you would end up with a public sidewalk as part of this infrastructure for Curry's Hayes Home, but, and also you have now a street connectivity, which helps traffic flow as well. But I think Curry Hayes Homes is probably a little better positioned for that at this point, but just trying to add some discussion points here.
Oh, what was that total allocation of CDBG money this year?
Mike, do you have the exact number?
It's four ninety, four ninety-five. And that just continues each year, and, and we have been advised that we need to keep the balance. As Michael said, you need to spend it and get it out to the community versus banking it or not using it.
And you also receive program income from loans that were made in the past, so it's not just that five hundred thousand, it's another hundred thousand here, and it, it does build up and it, it becomes, most programs have some spending difficulties, especially during COVID. I mean, it's just, it, it's changed the dynamic that we're working with quite a bit.
Well, I would just certainly say going forward and, and, and is that from the capital needs of the city itself, as they go through their budget process, that in the past, that CDBG money has been used to offset some of those expenses, been matched by, by public funds, by tax funds. That it needs to be consideration on how much we're going to put towards simply housing or how much are we put towards other needs, whether it's infrastructure needs or other needs that we can utilize CDBG money on, and that, that item has to be discussed, I believe, by the council at some point in time, pretty early on before you get into a budget process. Frankly, that's the way we have done most of this in the past. And obviously, we haven't used a lot of this in, in public housing to some degree, but there was always capital projects there that would benefit, that was basically public-based. And that's just where I think this is still somewhat of a change. You know, we'll need to just discuss it and see which has, is as a highest priority.
Counsel recognizing the request from Councilmember Butler and Owen for a little more time on the CDBG related items. The request on this agenda item is for us to place these on the agenda. Is there any objection to placing the two home items on the agenda for tomorrow evening?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. And then would we like to just have an additional two weeks on the CDBG related items and bring those back on the sixteenth agenda?
I, I would rather have enough time from the council to the staff to look at citywide projects where CDBG money might would qualify and, and at least give us some examples or some options to then determine, you know, where that money potentially could be spent at. So I'm not sure how long that would take staff to do that as they begin to work on their twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
I just, I just want to interject something here. I think we, as I recall it, we specifically said that we would be willing to look at infrastructure projects for CDBG when we discussed this, that that was what I thought we told staff to do, that we knew it was a different thing to do, but particularly with the Apple Street project, I know that's what we said.
No recollection as well, that we had this discussion.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not debating that at all. I remember that piece vividly. I agree. I was in agreement with it then. I just wasn't under the impression that it was going to be three hundred thousand dollars or that much of our funds for, for two, two projects. I thought maybe this was more of a Wade before you dive, because there are other projects that we've looked at or that would affect, to Harold's point, the city. or that would affect, to Harold's point, the city in a whole that that might be pressing as well. I thought it was just going to be a discussion point about how these would be spent, but if we want to move in that direction, we can, but not flip a light switch. This seems like a light switch to me.
So um, to staff, may, would it be reasonable to bring back some further information on the overall CDBG allocation? Including, as Michael put, there's some um, returns from previous investments. Um, and give us a better handle on the amount of funds there, what's been allocated already and what's being requested for this coming cycle? Would that be something?
Yeah, sure, we do that and we do continue, we've continued to do that and we can bring, we can bring back what's been budgeted this year and before and the balance and show you and, you know, project what we'll be receiving for next budget year, but.
Want to bring it back on the sixteenth, or would you like some more time for maybe the March second meeting?
I think Michael has a pretty good handle. We've financed this, it's been a big thing. Um, you probably want to, probably could push it to the March work session.
Yeah. All right, so we'll plan on seeing that again on the March first work session for the two CDBG related items.
Good.
Any objections to to that from council? All right, so just to reiterate, the two home items will be on our agenda for tomorrow evening. And then the two CDBG items will come back around with a larger CDBG funding discussion on the March first work session. All right, Michael, anything else you have for us?
No, I just appreciate your time and I apologize for the video and for tomorrow, I will make sure I have a different uh, Wi-Fi, so.
Very good. Thank you. Um, wonderful discussion. Veronica, thank you for sticking around. Um, I think it's an exciting kind of new development of housing, talking about a hundred and fifty-two new and renovated units in the community and and kind of one swoop, so that's that's very exciting.
Thank you.
All right, will council any other questions? Otherwise, we'll move to our next agenda item. All right. Item C on our agenda of downtown holiday decor and lighting. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Burlington Downtown Corporation Downtown Manager, Sarah Beth Hardy, and our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop. Now, this is a question we get lots on, uh, which is holiday decorations, particularly every time they go up. So I'm excited to hear what y'all have in store.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm bursting with excitement to share these concepts with you. Um, I first wanted to recognize before I share my screen, uh, we have a few BDC folks on the call. So our Board President Coleman Rich is here. Um, and then a few of our holiday decor task force members. So Mary Virginia Adams and Lauren Biratella are both here on the call. Um, and I just can't overstate how much their work has meant to what you're about to see. So here we go. Let me share. And then let me know.
All right, we've got your screen up.
All good?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so I want to give a little bit of background first. Um, the BDC Design Committee formed a holiday decor task force in late twenty nineteen. So after hearing a lot from the community, like you said, Mayor, um, a lot of community downtown business owner input, um, we decided it was time to really tackle this. Um, and also after talking to city staff about this, it became clear that uh, a lot of the current inventory of our decor uh, was was on its last leg. And so um, the task force got to work. Uh, I just mentioned a few of our members. We also were joined by Kerry Worthy of Alami Arts. And now his successor, Brandon Bruce, has joined on. And so uh, this is a dedicated crew that got right to work in assessing what needed to be done. So some of the main goals of the task force were to create a really memorable design for downtown, have it be um, something that would create a destination for locals and for visitors during the holiday season. Uh, we wanted the holiday decor to look consistently good during the day and at night. And to create pathways through downtown that would really provide those sightlines uh, to encourage people to, hey, explore what's what's down there. I see that there are lights or there's something happening. And lastly, we really wanted this to be pedestrian focused. So that's always one of our goals for downtown is that people are coming, they're walking around, they're walking in and out of shops, they're dining with us. Uh, and so what does that decor look like from that pedestrian point of view? And we focused really heavily on that. So we first, I took some starting steps to, again, like I said, get an inventory, figure out what we had, uh, and also look at what were the priority needs for replacing some of the existing decor. Uh, and just as a general note, most of our decor is over twenty years old. So some initial concepts that the task force prepared, um, two themes really that you'll see throughout this presentation. So what's highlighted here in green is a classic Main Street theme. Uh, it's traditional feel, um, just that classic greenery, red bows. And then the spaces highlighted in pink that you see represent a more whimsical, high-impact element of the decor. Uh, and of course, while we focused on these heavily trafficked areas of downtown, uh, we also made sure to have elements in these concepts that that cover the entire downtown district and will reach everywhere. First, I'm going to go through the replacements that we're proposing, um, starting with what's most urgently needed. So we love these bows and wreaths and garlands that are currently on Main Street and in the depot area. Um, they're classic, they fit with that theme. But we'd love to replace them with lit versions so that the appearance at nighttime is just as beautiful as it is during the day. The next thing we would like to replace is the large tree that currently sits at the depot's back lawn. We would love to have a tree with ornaments like the one that you see pictured. Um, again, to improve that daytime appearance and to create a bigger impact. Um, and one element here that's especially exciting to us is that moving the tree to LED lights allows us the freedom to move the tree. Uh, right now, it's powered, um, it's it's old power and it has um, bulbs that pretty much run off of a dedicated box there behind the depot. Um, so updating the lights on the tree give us the ability to possibly move it. We've talked about the small lot across from the old Moorfields Building at Spring Street in front. Uh, possibly having the tree there so that it's still visible for the cars on Webb Avenue, but it's really visible to, again, the pedestrians in downtown. Um, just moving it closer into the sidewalks, um, which also allows us the freedom to program that area a little bit more heavily. So in future years, having a holiday market, having other tree lighting events and things of that such, or that matter, um, in that area, just having it be more of a centerpiece for downtown is the dream. And the final major replacement that we are proposing are the pole-mounted lights that are all throughout the downtown district. So uh, it's a hundred and ten poles, to be exact. And we're proposing snowflakes, so to create a really beautiful, simple white blanket of light throughout the downtown. Uh, the snowflake design also gives us the ability to keep up the decor for longer if we so choose. So maybe they become winter decorations, uh, that could be up through the month of January, which I know is usually a really tough month for our businesses in downtown. And so to have that extra lighting would be something that would be really special potentially. And now I'll I'll move on to some new additions. So we got a great start in twenty twenty with the addition of this photo op wreath in the depot area. It was such a fun addition there. Uh, and visitors really enjoyed taking their photos there. We saw a lot of interaction. I know on Small Business Saturday, I saw multiple groups of people go and take photos with the wreath. Again, it fits in with that classic Main Street theme and just really matched perfectly with everything existing. Um, and if we're proposing to replace from that area, it will still fit. Uh, it's beautiful during the day and at night. Uh, it really frames the depot in just a really neat way. And again, it helped to fulfill that goal of making downtown a holiday destination, somewhere you want to go, see the wreath, get your picture taken, and it was just fun. Uh, so some of our biggest inspiration this year came from these photos on this slide. So um, how magical would it be um, for those driving or walking in downtown on Front Street? Um, to have the addition of these grapevine balls hanging across the street overhead, uh, really in that corridor as you come in. How neat would that be? So this is a high-impact item, uh, one that might be a little bit uh, harder to achieve, but we're already working on what that might look like, uh, really exploring how this would be a really neat experience. And as a way to welcome visitors to downtown from Church Street, we would love to have an overstreet banner like the ones you see in these photos. Um, again, it would fit in with the snowflakes, provide um, a line of sight. So you're on Church Street and you look down front, you see those grapevine balls down further. It just really provides the sort of a cohesive theme. Uh, I would love to see one of these at every entryway to the MSD one day. This is where we'll start, though. It seems to be a very popular way that people enter the district. I'm just to talk about some of the future vision. Of course, this is a very creative group. We went crazy on dreaming about what downtown could look like during the holidays. Um, and so these slides show, or these photos show you some of the future vision. So more gingerbread style colored lighting possibly at the Paramount and at the depot, really outlining those roof lines and windows, um, adding in some colors and some bigger interactive features. So the wreath was really popular this year. We expect that it will continue to be. But what about another interactive element somewhere else in downtown? And so that's, we'd love to phase this and and build toward adding things every year to to create more impact. So I'm going to move away from holiday decor. This task force has also come up with some concepts for creating a more ambient and comfortable atmosphere in downtown year-round. So first, uh, lighting the trees that surround the depot and courtyard, um, wrapping them in white lighting. This is something that would be there all year. Um, some other additions that are also already in progress, uh, wrapping the trellises and having just, again, that blanket of white light that's really welcoming. Uh, and then also cafe lighting. So as you see in the top example photo there, um, cafe lighting over the bricked areas in the depot. So this provides a huge improvement to that as an event space. Um, and it's generally one of the first places that people see when they come to downtown. So just creating that experience again. The second idea is for the city-owned alleyway that runs between Davis Street and Maple Avenue. Um, this is a simple addition of cafe lighting, um, such an inviting thing. So for pedestrians, hey, it's not scary. Come and walk down this way. Um, and just that curiosity piece of people wondering what's down there. Um, and the really cool thing is that it is adjacent to where we will have a mural installed very soon. So you come out, um, and you're at McCauley Family Learning Center, sort of midway through this alleyway. And so we would really love to activate this space. Alleyway activation is something that's become really popular for downtown revitalization. Um, and it's it's just a neat thing for people um, to be able to experience almost a little pocket park in downtown that they didn't expect. And I went through that really quick. I ran through, but I know you have a lot of questions. I want to, um, thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer anything. And I also want to thank our our task force members again and our board for their help.
Very good. Thank you, Sarah Beth. In any questions from council on this?
Sarah Beth, that the sightlines you mentioned, uh, i- i- in reality, you have what, three major sightlines coming off uh, front? Uh, and church in front, looking down back towards the depot, then the same thing at uh, at uh, Davis Street. And then probably the 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 most viable sightline is the depot. Uh, they're at front, looking back down towards City Park uh, on Main Street, because you can literally see all the way down that uh, that corridor. And, you know, I mean, obviously, I think this would take time to to look at this, but I I think that um, those sightlines you mentioned are really important in terms of of getting people's attention. Um, if you could take a look at that, if your staff or if your committee could, I'd I'd very much appreciate that.
Sure.
Standing at the front of the depot, looking back down, Main Street's a pretty, pretty good, uh, pretty good view all the way back down.
Yeah, it's already beautiful at Christmas time with the wreaths on the lamp post there. And so having that lit up, I think would be super impactful. Uh, we will have to work on electrical infrastructure there, but um, I've been told by Duke Energy that it shouldn't be uh, prohibitive. We should be able to do it there. So that would be absolutely gorgeous going all the way down Main Street.
And I like your idea about moving the Christmas, the big Christmas tree from behind the depot to clear that area out, finding another location. Um, I I I do like that idea a lot.
Other question?
The holiday, the holiday lighting is important and and I think everything that you're talking about doing ne- needs to be addressed, but I think just as important and and maybe more so from a, from a um, usability standpoint is the ambient lighting downtown. That that whole purpose, I spend a lot of time downtown at night. We we go to eat downtown and and it's, it it's beautiful even at night, but it's just dark. And, you know, we've got a lot of trees down there that we could wrap. We've got light poles that could be wrapped, certainly. Uh, where Main Street comes into the depot area, but then in the depot at night, it looks like a dungeon.
Yeah.
It it looks like a dungeon over there. And if it had canopy lights strung through those trees, um, it would just encourage people to mill around some more. I can see already that people want to. They just don't quite feel safe enough. It it's just not uh, as inviting as it could be. And uh, last weekend, we were downtown and it was packed. It was a lot of people down there at night, but not enough people moving around because it just wasn't inviting.
We agree.
Also, it would impact, have a positive impact there to GM in terms of people visiting that.
Yeah.
And I, yeah.
And we've, we've got, I think in twenty twenty-one, we're going to see a lot more nighttime visitors, especially right there on Front Street with the businesses that are recently opened and are coming. And so timing really couldn't be better for lighting up that area for new visitors and old visitors, people that are coming back. And um, it that after five o'clock uh, element that we've been searching for in downtown is, it's almost here.
Yep, look, agreed. And I I'm I'm all in support of anything we can do from an ambient lighting standpoint in in addition to what you guys are looking at for the holiday changes.
Yeah, and I'll I'll uphold that desire, I know, and kind of looking at the depot space. It was planned for a lot of light. There's a lot of built-in lighting that's become defunct over the years there and I think contributes to that darkness. So uh, the lights that have been put up on the trellises there look good. Um, I appreciate you continuing to focus on that. And the fact that delivers safety and kind of ambient value year-round. It's great.
Thanks.
Other council questions, comments?
Well, I hate to bring up what is the price tag of of these kinds of things. Is this something that we're thinking we would introduce a little bit at a time and do some fundraising around it in addition to city participation? What? I think I was of around the last time we did Christmas decorations, so I feel like I need to ask that question.
Sure. So actually, what we're proposing is to use the BDC's appropriated fund balance for this expense. Um, all of it, nearly all of it, at least the purchasing of the actual decor itself. Um, no, sorry. And uh, so we're looking at about seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars from what I've gotten quotes for. Um, and that's with everything included that you just saw. Um, and so possibly a little higher, just depending on what we need to do with the electrical infrastructure. Um, I wanted to get council input before going too far down that real big hole, but um, there are some, of course, some improvements, you know, adding power in that Spring Street lot and some different things. But the decor itself. But the decor itself, it's actually on major, major sale right now, which is why the timing for this presentation is helpful. And so we're hoping to be able to take advantage of that.
I, I would like to see how, if we need to subordinate funding to get it done, so that it doesn't linger on and it looks like we're sort of piecing things together. It, it's important that, that we get this right and we get it right as quickly as we can. But if there's, if, if we've got to subordinate it in some capacity, I'd like to see what that would be to get it done.
And maybe part of that GM would be if we would take care of the, the actual hard part, the infrastructure part, at least in terms of getting power, facilitating that.
Yeah.
To, and then go from there. But I think that would be, that's something we probably could do better, honestly, as a city.
Yeah, of course, that improved infrastructure is great all the time, not just during holiday time. I know.
That's right.
Creation, we'd be super excited about that.
Yeah.
So much of that could be used year round, which I think is really terrific. It's very exciting, Sarah Beth.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate the team and your creativity and putting it together. I know, and seeing some of those photos, especially with the grapevine lights or the balls hanging across. I know our kids would love that. I think you get to a certain quantity of the decorations and all of a sudden it really becomes magical and exciting and creates a new ambience. And I, we were not there with our current decorations. It just feels like we've kind of plastered them up and hoped it's enough and it's, it's not. So it's good to see the team just kind of kept layering, create that really nice ambience in downtown.
Sarah Beth, I'm sure your team was, was very strong because your leader there Coleman, I'm, I'm sure he was not very helpful in this, was he?
No comment.
Was, was not helpful, was not helpful. Now, no, the, the, the task force and the design committee worked on this. You know, as Sarah Beth started, we, in fact, we've been talking about it for the last couple of years. And, and probably would have, if it hadn't been for the current situation, probably would have had this already finished. And, but I mean, what excitement to, to be able to, to see something like that. I, I agree with the mayor is that people will come downtown, not only in addition to visit the, the businesses down there, but, but just to be excited about the decorations. So, so, so this is very exciting to see. And yes, and you're right. I, I was of no help.
Oh, I appreciate your honesty. God bless you.
Another, you talked a little about the existing decorations being 20 years old or thereabouts, which is impressive because I can't get a string of lights to last more than two or three seasons. So, but I'm curious kind of, when we look at this investment, how long do we think it would last? Ignoring the fact that fashion and trends and things like that change and this may go out of style before it's actually useful lights.
Well, I, I hope that what we've come up with is a little bit, a little bit, you know, age proof in the way. It's very classic, simple. You know, as we, as we continue to build on some of the interactive things, it, it might not be. But you know, this is a great update, moving to those LED bulbs. You know, for one, it's an energy and cost savings. It just gets us in a place to really take all of this decor forward for, I expect, you know, the foreseeable future. Yeah, if the old stuff lasted for this long, I, I can't imagine that, that the new stuff will not last as long or longer. But I think, I think it's a great, great investment for now. I'm not, not sure about the life on all of these things, but we're not proposing anything too much different, you know, in the way it's installed. So I'm hopeful there.
I know Peter is a little dumb, bummed about the lack of Ferris wheel, but maybe in a future.
Well, but good to hear though, that there's excitement about the concept and that if anything, we, we maybe should go a little further than not far enough in this initial bite and, and try to get something that really, you know, brings the excitement level to a point and doesn't look as incomplete maybe as some of these slides. So that's, that's good direction for us. And, and as you mentioned, the, the other lighting helps create that experience and that place making year round that really adds a ton of value to the, the different tenants and the merchants downtown and, and makes it worthwhile for them to be a part of the MSD district. So excited to hear your reactions and we look forward to moving forward and giving you some exacts.
Did we get any feedback from, from LabCorp as during the process? I'm curious too, because it's kind of Spring Street is a nice vista up from their facility. And I wonder if any specific design elements could be brought in there to help with kind of the holiday gateway to their global headquarters.
We did not. I love that idea. And I will make a note about that because yeah, of course, all of this can be layered. And you know, like I said, those, those skyline banners at, at some of the different corridor entrances. Yeah, they, they do a great job. I love their roof line lights. I'd love it if they were consistent all over downtown. So that would be an interesting partner to think about for this.
Any other council feedback? There's, there's no action item on this, but I think the feedback council members have provided is helpful as they work on their budgeting process and timeline for acquisition.
So, so mayor, I think to address that and address Ms. Hikes' question, I, I think we plan to bring a budget amendment February 16th. That'll have the, the transfers back and forth that finance needs to, to go ahead and get the BDC funds and, and whatever city funds need to supplement, as Mr. Butler mentioned, to do this correctly and do it right. So we'll have that for you on the 16th agenda. So I think Sarah Beth told us in the meeting prep that it's about a 33% discount on the decorate, on the holiday decorations if you buy them now. So we see no reason not to take advantage of that. Go ahead and make some commitments.
Very good. Anything? Go ahead, Kathy.
I'd love a sale.
Go for it.
All right. Any other comments, questions on this agenda item? All right. Sarah Beth, Peter Coleman, the whole team, we appreciate your efforts on this. It's exciting to see pictures and to know that the holiday next year is going to be brighter than, than 2020. So.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to more downtown. But item D, downtown grants program. And at this time, we're again going to get to chat with Sarah Beth Hardy and Peter Bishop.
So I'm going to give Sarah Beth a break so she can catch her breath and have a sip of water. I'll go ahead and take this budget amendment item. Before you, city council and Mr. Mayor is a budget amendment to transfer from the aforementioned appropriated MSD fund balance, some additional money into the downtown grants program. We are asking for this request because as Sarah Beth mentioned in her presentation, and both of us have in, in previous months, despite the pandemic and, and just before the pandemic, our downtown was experiencing a lot of development activity and a lot of new construction projects and new businesses coming in. So I'll recount again that we have had a relocation and expansion of the Owl and Rabbit Ga- Gallery. The blend has expanded into the former Owl and Rabbit Gallery space. The former Mary Catherine's Building across from the Burlington Beer Works and adjacent to the Paramount Theater is being renovated with condominiums on top. And it will have a wine bar and a restaurant concept on the first floor. The Burlington Food Hall in the former Co-op Grocery Store is under construction and underway. And the Mini Dingo Bottle Shop and, and watering hole opened up earlier. This, this actually late last year earlier for us. So among those are several event venues, a lot of great energy and great places happening. But what that means, a lot of those projects have tapped the city's downtown grants program. City Council generously budgets $75,000 per year. Last year, the city and the BDC approved grants in excess of that $75,000 budget. However, we had some transition with the BDC organization joining with the city. We had some savings there that we applied in that budget year to cover the overages from last year's grant program. This year, we've also had more grant requests than, than we had money budgeted, which is again, a positive for us. So what we are asking for today is to take some appropriated fund balance, $50,000 and apply it to, $20,000 will be applied to existing commitments for projects that are underway that the BDC has awarded grants for. And then the additional 30 will cover our next grant cycle, which we already have one application in and we may be getting another application into that future grant cycle. So to recap, we've been very successful getting new redevelopment projects and the grants program has been very popular. We are asking council to take some appropriated fund balance from the MSD fund and reappropriate it into the grants program so that we can fill in a little bit of a gap and do one more grant cycle for the downtown program.
Peter, can we, can we balance, I'm not asking what it is in the MSDC fund? Are we, are we strong enough to do that? Or is that, that might need to help some, some regular general fund money?
So my understanding, we did meet with Peggy Reese, the Director of Finance and Risk Management for the city a little over a month ago. At that time, she identified $180,000 in the appropriated fund balance line for the MSD. If we conduct this budget amendment, we still have plenty of dollars to do the holiday decor and then look at some additional decor items with, with those funds. I see that Peggy's put on her video. I'll let her speak to this.
Peggy, I think you're muted. We're still not getting your audio if there's. Nope. We're still not getting Peggy's audio.
She should come over into my office.
She's unmuted, mayor. I'm not sure why she can't.
Yeah, I see that. So I don't know if it's a technical. Yep, she, I think she's going to borrow someone else's computer.
No, no, she's not.
Yep.
Is she?
Celebrity squares or see where she, she winds up.
Musical chair. So I'm the new Peter. So I feel like BDC's fund balance has gotten a little bit high. And so I feel like this is appropriate use of those monies and to get it to a more level that it should be.
Thank you, Peggy, and for your dedication to get your audio in. Other council questions?
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Yes.
All right. So any objection to council approving this? I guess this would move on to a consent agenda. Staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. All right. That be included in tomorrow evening's consent agenda with no objections? All right. Very good. Sarah Beth, Peter, any additions on that?
None. Thank you very much.
That's exciting to know that we've got development like that happening, especially amid the pandemic. So we appreciate y'all being on the ball to, to say, hey, we need some more gas in the tank to keep it going. So. All right. With that, we'll move on to item E, Boards and Commissions Report. We've got a number of these and we'll turn things over to our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do have several items for you this evening. Good, good reports. We have two rezonings I'm going to speak to you about. And then we're going to have Conrad O'Meades speak to us about the chicken ordinance. And we have Chad Meadows also going to come in at the end and speak to us about the UDO text amendments. I'm going to share my screen before I start talking. The first rezoning request is to request 1.3 acres of a 2.83 parcel. This is requested from medium density residential. It's shown by the hatch here on this map. From medium density residential to conditional industrial zoning to allow a cemetery. The property is located on the north side of Hanford Road, just north of Old Coach Trail. I want to use the site plan because I want to point out a few key things. This gives you the, the location of the site and the zoning around it. Is there any questions before I, I move from this? I think the next one will be a little bit more helpful. It'll have more detail on it. Can you see that? Yet.
The, the site plan up?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It's, it's small. Let me see if I can use my, here we go, touchscreen. Where my cursor is, this is the area to be rezoned. You see the, the, the smaller portion here to the, to the left side or the west side of the site. That is the 1.3 acres of the 2.83, 83 parcel. This is a parcel in the front. It is only this that's being rezoned. This is not. There's also, I want to point out an additional balance of property here to the rear. Everybody see that? The 15.54. We'll speak to that later. Just want to get everybody oriented of what, this is the request of the rezoning. This is the actual lot, the zoning limits you'll see. Then also I want to point out the city limits line. This area, the front is in the city, the back being in the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Okay, I'll move on from that, but I just wanted to make those points. And I can answer any questions about that as we go through. This is a conditional rezoning, as I said, so there are conditions I want to go over. And that was a key point of pointing that out to you. There will only be one access from Hanford Road for all, for both of these parcels, both the one that's being rezoned and the one behind it will be one point of access. The applicant is to certify that proposed use is not subject to any North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 65 items. Those items are related to burial grounds or cemeteries, requires permits and documentation. So we're asking to certify that it is not subject to those. We also have a condition of no parking or spill over traffic out onto Hanford Road. You see the proposed driveway here, but just so there's no spill over or parking on Hanford Road. I mentioned the conditional rezoning is just the 1.3 acres, that is a condition. These are the key points about the parcels, both parcels. The area to be rezoned, the, the balance, if you will, of the parcel will be annexed into the city of Burlington, as will this parcel in here. It's one of the conditions that all the property would be annexed. The annexation will be received before the driveway permit is, is requested from NCDOT. Do I need to review those, any of those access? Certified, no other general statute items need to be provided, no parking on Hanford. 1.3 acres is the rezoning request. And basically in general, all that, what you see is subject to be annexed, 15.5 point acres before the permit is driveway permit is pulled for access. As well, you see there's only limits to that, the city limits would be expanded with annexation.
I just need to make, be sure I understand. You're saying that the whole 15 acre parcel is, would be annexed, but the only portion that would be used is 1.3. And, and what about what's next to it?
That would be, that would be, that's, that's in this corporate limits now currently. So this parcel would not, you'd have one point of access for this entire area. This is already in the city limits. This would be rezoned. This would stay as is currently its medium density residential. This would be rezoned, the 1.3.
So that access road off of Han, Hanford Road would come through. If, if the rest of that was ever developed, then that would be the way through it. So you'd go through the cemetery to go to the.
That's how they propose it. We often see as things redevelop or change, they can always change that access the way it works. That we're not conditioning, they could not make that change. But they would always have one point of access to Hanford. So you could relocate the drive, you could reconfigure the access. But as far as getting in and out of Hanford, you'd have one point. Good question. There's any others? I can continue on?
Mike, where's the present zoning now?
It's medium, medium density residential.
How about, how about the back, the back end of the property?
Medium, let's see if I've got it right here. Pull it up. All the yellow you see there is, is the medium density residential. All the yellow you see there is, is the medium density residential. Leave that up as I talk, I've got a few more comments.
So really the entire area around this piece of property is, is really the same zoning as it not?
It is.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to do that and I wanted to step through it now, I'm gonna put this up to step you through the land use plan. Cause you'll see a different color and a different projection. The property is in the area of residential uses, vacant land and the larger Kazaroff and Alamance Foods sites to the northwest, the adopted land use plan, which is what you see on the screen, identifies this area for general industrial uses. The proposed use of the cemetery in the conditional industrial zoning is inconsistent and it's not compatible with the land use plan. The entire area, as I mentioned, is, is general industrial, it's got a high potential for that development. And we've discussed this with Peter Bishop as well, the Economic Development Director, about that. Do want to point out the site plan, what you just saw has been approved by the TRC, the Technical Review Committee. However, planning staff considers the proposed use to be inconsistent with the land use plan and does not recommend the rezoning request for approval. The rezoning was considered at the January twenty-fifth Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and the request received a vote of three to three on a motion to deny the request. Due to the tie vote, this item is submitted to City Council without a planning and zoning recommendation. And I can answer any further questions you have.
Any questions from council regarding this, this item?
I have a question, I have a question, Mike.
Yes, sir.
It's, the posture of it is, you know, I know with a three, three, and it's coming to the council is, is the petitioner requesting that a hearing be set?
The, no, that was, in the UDO, that, we didn't, like, that, that went automatically without a recommendation, that it went to City Council.
Okay, so it, it, it's automatic, so that's not a problem, so, okay.
Yes, sir, as the, the next one maybe will be different than I'll present to you, but good question. Yes, this will automatically go to February sixteenth.
Okay.
Pardon, was there something you were adding?
Mike, can you just scroll up, so folks can see the entirety of the parcel, I'm only seeing about half of it on.
Oh, I'm sorry, trying to get out of the way. There we go, on this, there we go.
Yep, there you go, thank you.
Okay. Had to get all our faces out of my way, couldn't see us. Yes, sir.
So Mike, with the conditional use for the burial plot here, obviously they've selected to only use the front portion of that property. Should, should in the future they need more space, how would that process work of, for them expanding?
It would be similar, they would have to come back and expand, you see the zoning limits line, they would have to make that request to expand it, that's why we were very specific about the one point three.
Okay.
So it would be clear to everybody what was being rezoned and what was being used.
Just that piece as you've marked out.
Yes, sir.
Other council questions? Mike, is the, should I, oh, go ahead Kathy.
Would a church be a use by right? In this, on this property?
In the MDR, the current zoning?
Or no, or in the, in the landlord use plan?
Uh, don't believe we would recommend the church in an industrial area, Joey Lee's on here, he can correct me.
But on MDR, as currently zoned, would a church be permitted?
I believe you can have, I believe you can have a church, possibly not by right.
Not by right?
I heard, I heard Joey.
Churches are permitted, double K. Yep, churches are permitted in the MDR as a matter of right.
Okay, so it is by right.
There are standards that go along with it, but they are permitted as a matter of right.
That, that's in the MDR, but would, would, would that flow with the land use plan as well, would that be considered consistent with the land use plan?
A church request? It would not, it would be, we would have the same recommendation based on the land use plan, yes, sir, it would not be consistent with the.
That's what I thought.
Difference is they could do the church by right.
Yes.
Did a cemetery by right, so they had to request a resigning.
Yeah, I got you. Kathy, was the nature of your question, I mean, many churches might ask for a cemetery to be part of their church property?
Yeah, I, I'm this is one of those zoning questions that I, I find between a rock and a hard place. I'm sure that everybody has struggled with this. But I just kept thinking about it. And I want to preserve industrial land. However, this is, it's kind of a holy ground kind of issue. And so I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear what others have to say about it, but I'm I, I'm, I'm struggling with this one.
Additional council comments?
Mayor, I would, I think Mike referenced Peter early, I, I, I would like to hear Peter's comments on the potential use of the that property in reference to industrial development.
Yes, sir, thank you, Councilmember Owen. When this project was first submitted to the city and looking at this entire chunk of it, despite some of the issues on the property, looking at it as a, as an industrial parcel and more importantly, as part of a potential assemblage of industrial parcels to meet setback or utility requirements, specifically stormwater in this case, as the land kind of flows toward a creek on that side. And how when you rezone land that's in a predominantly industrial area, it, it, it sometimes causes a domino effect to the land uses surrounding it. This property and specifically the property directly to the north and to the west have productive industrial uses on it and have the opportunity in the long term to be fully built out and, and more industrial land use patterns. And they would be desirable to that effect with the presence of city utilities, the proper zoning and the proximity to the interstate interchange. A, as we saw with the Hanford Brick Factory site renovation, that has now become a half million square foot industrial, productive industrial site. I think developers can and will get creative with land and assemblage and can potentially do something or use something with this parcel. Perhaps not directly as a building site, but as part of an assemblage to meet a, meet an agenda or meet a, a total site coverage that they're looking for. So the, the, the amendments or changes that the applicant has made to reduce the site and to reduce its potential impact to other industrial uses are to be lauded and certainly can defray from some of those issues.
Peter, there is, there's water or creek in this site, isn't there?
The, the border, I believe that, that kind of uneven border of the purple and white on the screen you see in front of you, I believe that is a drainage feature. I, I, I don't know exactly, but that's my understanding.
Is there an easement, I noticed there was a fifty foot buffer on one of the, the site plans.
There are multiple easements across the property for multiple utilities, which was one of the, the, of course, the reasons stated why it, it may not be as ideal of a development site. And that certainly can interrupt some development and you certainly couldn't have building footprint in some of those cases. But certainly there are still, you know, good usable pieces of land out there for potential developments.
So by them locating the, the burial site towards the road and not occupying the center of this piece, it does potentially make it easier to assemble other parts of it onto something?
It appears that in response to the, the comments of staff and, and some of the discussions with staff and the applicant, that they've attempted to mitigate the impacts to the industrial uses around and, and to some of the neighboring residential uses as well.
And there is a church directed across the street, right, not the church requesting this, but Blessed Sacrament is directly across the street.
Correct, and we did receive a letter of support from, from the church.
Other council questions or comments on this?
I, I have a question, Mike, Joey, if I understand correctly, what's been said, it's that a church can be located there as a matter of right, is that correct?
That's correct, with some standards.
With, okay, with standards, but.
It is by right, yes, sir.
Suppose that the application was to, to construct a church and also have, you know, the cemetery is, has an apartment use. Could you, could you deny one and not, and approve the other, you know, with standards?
I believe, Joe, I believe a church with the cemetery is a, is a accessory adjacent use of a church, that's the difference here.
Well, currently we do not have listed as an accessory use. It's listed as a principal use, it can only be done through conditional zoning. So if a church was to build a church and then want a cemetery, the cemetery part would have to be through conditional zoning.
The same process, conditional zoning?
Correct.
Okay, so you could, you could really wind up with a church and you could wind up with a church without the cemetery, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I think Stafford answers this question from Mayor earlier, but there in no parcel zoning in our entire city is a cemetery considered by right. Everywhere it is a conditional use, correct?
In the current UDO, yes, sir.
Current UDO, which means that any cemetery request anywhere in the city and any zoning type has to go through this conditional process, correct?
That is correct.
Which, I do want to emphasize, I think is.
Conditional or plan, or planned development.
Yeah. Obviously cemeteries are a big decision for city councils because once you create that holy ground, it is a huge monumental effort to ever reverse that as our our city's seen in the past when we've attempted to move cemeteries and is a not a respectful and clean process. It's obviously a very weighty decision for any council. Other council comments, questions? Mike, is, is the request to set a date of public hearing on this?
This will go directly to February sixteenth.
Okay, so this would be. Council, any other questions, comments, otherwise we'll see this back on our February sixteenth agenda. All right, Mike, you want to move on to your next item?
Sure. Yes. This next request is a request to amend the existing conditional rezoning approved by City Council September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen. The property is located at seventeen twenty-two Shamrock Drive, which is formerly, as you know, the Shamrock Golf Course. It was rezoned to a conditional residential district and annexed into the city limits, December of two thousand eighteen. The applicant has requested an amendment to the original conditional use zoning to allow an increase to the single family lots from two hundred and nineteen lots to two hundred and forty-one lots. The adoptive comprehensive land use plan calls for rural residential agricultural in this area. This site is adjacent to its existing residential and vacant land zoned for medium density residential uses. While this request also allows a higher density than the rural residential would, it is inconsistent with the land use plan. But staff does support the request due to compatible and adjacent residential uses, as you can see on this map here, the hatch part would be the rezoning area, the yellow will be medium density residential. And that's the same recommendation that was received in two thousand and eighteen. The request was considered at the January twenty-fifth Planning and Zoning Commission, the request received a vote of four to two on a motion to deny the request. Due to this vote, the Planning and Zoning Commission does not amend approval of the amendment to the conditional rezoning. I will add, going forward, this is the item that City Council, because it was approved under the prior zoning ordinance, will need to set a date of public hearing tomorrow evening as an add-on for February sixteenth. And I believe Mr. Brown has submitted a letter to that effect to request.
Any questions regarding this item?
And do we, do we have an obligation to set a public hearing?
That has been a question.
Are we obligated to set a date of public hearing in this case?
Let me respond to that if I could, Mr. Mayor and Council, under the old ordinance, it was in, if it had gotten a negative vote from below in, on the advisory board from the P and Z, it was in the discretion of the City Council as to whether or not to set a public hearing on the matter before the City Council. As a practical matter, I think Mr. Ward could probably I, I don't recall when the City Council ever actually turned one down to allow the petitioner to have an opportunity to be heard by the elected body. But that, Ms. Councilman, Councilwoman, I, that, that is definitely in your, in the, in the discretion of the City Council under the old ordinance.
If I could, having some history, I probably witnessed that one time over forty some years. And, and on top of that too, having said that, I'm pro-public hearing. I, I, I really, I, I feel very strongly that people need to have sort of, you know, the body that makes that final decision, have a hearing before them and and I wouldn't want to do anything that would short circuit that, so I would be, I would be for a public hearing. And I will add too, however agonizing it may be, I think we should have a public hearing.
Appreciate those comments, Councilmember. Other council.
I agree, I agree with Bob on that, I think it's only fair for a, a project of this size and obviously this history. I think it would be, we, we need to have a public hearing and, and, and hear people's comments.
Other council members, Councilmember Butler, any objection to the public hearing?
Well, no, I agree wholeheartedly with, with Bob on, on the public hearing piece. I, I echo that, I feel strongly that that it should be a hearing for, for both sides, both sides have a right, but it, obviously this was pretty contentious before and it took a lot of maneuvering and massaging to get, get it to where it was, I think everybody involved worked hard to get this towards where it could be approved and be a project that was as amenable as possible. But now the change to expand it, obviously our UDO has changed since then, does that have any impact on this at all?
It does not, they're, they're allowed, the original request actually had additional lots and they removed those at the hearing, if you recall.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is a request to move back to that, two hundred, from two nineteen to two hundred and forty-one.
Councilman, no, with no objections, we'll add this to our consent agenda to set a date of public hearing for February sixteenth. Tomorrow evening.
It's fine.
All right, quick, one question, what, what, what to import of Lawson Brown's letter, is that in effect, and I think I'm reading it here. He said that the request to hear the appeal from the negative vote, if we set a public hearing, there's nothing to be heard, right, David?
David, are you there?
Bobby, yes, you, you have a public hearing, if, if you set the date for public hearing for the sixteenth, that proposed rezoning, modification of the, of the zoning to allow for the two hundred and forty-one as opposed to two nineteen, that's, that is to be heard.
That becomes the.
All right, the, the question, the question I have is do we have to, I mean, do we have to hear Lawson make his request? You know, or can we go ahead, you know, by consensus, cause the mayor said, you know, to put it on the consent agenda, can we by consensus this evening set it off a public hearing and obviate any request? set it off a public hearing and obviate any request on this part because of, of the denial? Is any problem with that?
Actually, I, I think y'all to allow Mr., I don't think that I would put it on the consent agenda. I think I would allow Mr. Uh, Brown to make his request, uh, tomorrow evening in the event that someone else comes and speaks, uh, to the contrary.
Okay, that, that was my concern because having had the vote that you did, you know, I, I don't want, I don't want to leave any kind of gaping hole in somebody, in somebody's due process.
Yeah.
And also too, what we talking about tonight, you, you know, really is, it was probably not the appropriate, well, maybe in some instance, but maybe not the appropriate time to be setting a public hearing. So my, my feeling is, and I agree with you, I think, I think probably need to hear him and that. At the conclusion of that and any other comments, if it's so inclined that we, you know, make a motion to have a public hearing. And I, I'm, again, I, I'm certainly in favor of it, but anyway, uh, the mayor, back to your point, is I think we put this on separately here from Lawson Brown.
Okay.
And then it'd be the wishes of city council with respect to the hearing. Is that correct, David?
Well, that is new business for tomorrow night's agenda.
Correct.
That, very good. All right, um, I know Mike's got at least two more items. Uh, it is after seven o'clock and so I'm gonna ask that we take a, a quick five-minute break, um, before we dig into those. I know there's some U D O items in there too. So we'll make sure everyone's fresh for, uh, a discussion. So we will take a five-minute break and resume at seven eighteen. All right, we'll resume in about two minutes. All right, one minute. Folks could turn their videos and audio back on as necessary.
Scott, can you make Chad Meadows live?
Yes, sir.
Welcome back, Chad.
I have enjoyed watching tonight's meeting. It's been really great. You guys are doing some really exciting, cool stuff. So it's been great.
I'll expect a critique tomorrow now, Chad. Send me some notes.
I, I, the, the problems that we're seeing in the U D O are, you know, kind of symptoms of your success. So it's, it's great.
Appreciate that shout out from, uh, Michael Blair on the affordable housing complex and it looks good because we have our U D Os.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys are making all the right moves. It's an exciting time.
All right, so we will go ahead and resume, um, with, we are on item E, Boards and Commissions Reports. We have two remaining items here and so Chad, are you gonna lead us on this next one?
I think Conrad was gonna present the chickens.
Yeah. I'm gonna, we, I'm gonna just give a quick intro, intro. Conrad is gonna handle the presentation, but this is another, this is the item we spoke with you about as a work session. Uh, directed us to go to P and Z with this, get their feedback, uh, also had some of your edits at that work session. Conrad's gonna summarize that for us and we can answer any questions and give you the update from, uh, P and Z. Conrad, I'll turn it over to you.
Just to confirm, are you all able to see the, the slideshow? Okay, so good evening, Mayor and members of council. This is a follow-up to, from city council's direction to provide a draft ordinance concerning backyard chickens in the city. This slide shows the temporal progression beginning in August of last year to current day, showing the progression of the draft ordinance with the most recent involvement being from the Planning and Zoning Commission, which had their meeting last week, Monday, January twenty-fifth. Staff has included the recommended, the recommended changes to, uh, to the draft ordinance based on city council's direction from December seventh, which involved a revision of the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to five feet. Additionally, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to support the request with a suggestion to include a process for code of compliance after permit issuance. So staff is currently asking city council, um, to support or to, I'm sorry, to, to set a public hearing of, at tomorrow's night meeting for the city code of ordinances concerning section six, six dash thirteen. That concludes my brief presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Uh, I, I, I have a question, Mayor. Uh, back, back when we discussed this, I, I'm, I'm just recalling my conversation that, uh, we would talk further about this in March. Uh, I, I didn't know that we were gonna have a public hearing as soon since there were some budget implications that we'd talk more about it in March than make the determination at that time to have a public hearing. So my question is, does, what's others' recollection of that? Maybe, maybe I misunderstood. So let me just stop that and see if anybody remembers anything differently.
I think with, you're correct. We had estimated that this would come back around in March. However, we had also asked that it go to P and Z. Um, and so the staff report indicates that it has made it through P and C with, uh, kind of unanimous approval, um, with the one note about the confirmation of, um, that they conform. Yeah, so, uh, with this additional information, I think the request to council is, would we like to do a, a hearing earlier? Um, and, and I think your point to the budget piece is, yes, there was a budget concern as far as staffing. Um, but there's nothing permitting us from hearing the ordinance and then setting a effective date down the road.
Well, yeah, let, let me, let me take it a step further, you know. I, I don't know, maybe I could ask Harden. Um, you know, really, you know, in as a sort of a play on words, a chicken or the egg here type thing. Uh, you know, if, if there will be some budget, you know, matters that need to be addressed, would you in effect, you know, would you address those sort of uh, preliminarily or, you know, first prior to setting a public date, you know, uh, effective date? So a- anyway, I'm, I'm throwing it out for the floor. If any other council members have any comment one way or another, so.
Thoughts from council?
Well, I, I mean, I agree with Bob. I was of the impression that we were gonna, you know, take a, a comprehensive look at how this would have a budget impact, um, so that we can look at it from both perspectives. Um, I don't know why it would be a, a rush. It's not, it's not that big of an issue. I mean, it's something that we're taking up sort of ad hoc a little bit. Um, I, I, I just would like to get some budgetary feedback.
So would council, be to, here's, or see an additional feedback and budgetary portion of this on the March first work session?
Is that, I mean, can Harden get his information together, maybe?
I, I think from our, from our previous conversations, I think we, we obviously can get the numbers for a staff person and whatever equipment and uh, supplies may be needed for that person in animal services. Um, I think we've got some preliminary data. Now, if you'd like us to have that ready in March, we could certainly have that ready. There are.
My, my question would be, uh, with this, and I'm not trying to put this off, but if we're talking about a budget question, uh, how does that interplay with the total, with the, in the big picture budget going forward? Um, in the new fiscal year, and, and since we're still being somewhat challenged, we, we are being challenged with the pandemic situation. Um, you know, i- is it, uh, should we wait and see what the request from cap, from staff is in terms of budgeting period and determine if this is a priority item to budget for, or am I making this more difficult for everyone?
I mean, my recollection would be that, uh, what Director Jessica Arias brought up was that there's currently a bottleneck in staffing. So there's already a, a demand for some more staffing based on, uh, things that they have been tasked with. Um, I think Conrad had presented previously that they had some rough estimates of how many people might apply for this, but since this is brand new, um, those are entirely guesses and we don't actually know how many people might require staff to review a plan and inspect a site. Um, so my, my thought would be, there are very few things in the city that we just kind of throw money at without any actual idea of what the tangible on the ground is. I think it's better to pilot it. Um, so my thought would be, we, we move ahead at some point with allow, I like having a, an ordinance hearing. Um, if the ordinance passes, um, then we see if it develops a, a staffing constraint related to the, the chicken piece. And allocate staffing at that point, but throw staffing at this speculatively, I don't think is, is reasonable. I it's funny, I was reading something the other day that was talking about the early days of the US Patent Office and they weren't sure how many patents might be applied for and so they didn't allocate specific staff or offices. I think they tasked, um, Washington and Jefferson to just review patent applications. Uh, and then as things grew and developed over the years, then they, they had to actually get staffing. So, I mean, I'm hesitant to say that just because we approve a foul ordinance, we're gonna have to have another person. Well, we, we need another person in animal control anyway because of the workload there, um, whether or not we approve a foul ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but there's still, there is still a fiduciary responsibility to this. And if we're, if we're talking about globally going to a, a priority-based budgeting anyway, I mean, there's lots of other needs out there. This is, this is obviously gonna have some piece of monetary element to it. Um, I, I don't want to glaze over that. I'm, I'm good with whatever, but it, it does kind of go against what we, what I thought we were, we were gonna be doing with this.
So I mean, I'm in favor of us having a, us, a report about kind of budget and staffing related there to more detail than we had in our previous discussion about this on the March first meeting. And then we can make a call on next steps from there.
Look, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, Mayor. You're saying let's, let's get a budget report and then we determine at that point when we set the public hearing?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I would like to hear more about the budget. You know, maybe the first meeting in March, you know, if we could hear about the budget. And also I'd like to, I'd like to know, you know, from Harden, you know, what his forecast, you know, with respect to another animal control officer and, and equipment, whatever it is. In other words, if he can forecast it either one way or another, I don't know whether you know, it's gonna forecast, we need somebody, you know, hearing from Jess Arias, it sounded like to me they need somebody now. I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but it sounded like it pretty well stretched. But anyway, let me just stop there. I'd feel better if we'd get the report on the budget first meeting in March and at, at that time, you know, make some determination as well at, when a public hearing would be set.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was saying too. We receive that information in March and then with both P and Z's of recommendation for us to review this and the budget item in hand, then we'd make a call on what we want to do next. Any objections from council? On that?
No.
All right.
If, if Mr. Mayor, if I could bring up, I, I think that under the new U D O that the, once it goes through the P and Z, the, it automatically go, is set for a public hearing at the next city council meeting. If, if I could, uh.
Okay.
If, if, if I'm incorrect about that, let one of the planning folks let me know that and.
You can check on that to make sure what sounds like the process. We can check.
So that would. So that would require then to go ahead and continue the public hearing from the 16th to a date certain?
I don't, I think, I think probably, I think, I think you just put it on the agenda for tomorrow evening as a separate item. And we, you know, we just make a decision about when we want to have the hearing. Not actually set it, not have it continued, but then, you know, just duly acknowledge what the ordinance says. But, you know, if it's a majority of the city council, we determine at when we'll have the hearing. You know, because the city council ultimately sets, you know, they're the ones that are going to be conducting the hearing. So will that work, David?
But let us, that's fine with me, but let's, let's take a look at the ordinance UDO and see what, see what the commission actually says.
So we'll add a new business item tomorrow for us to consider something. But you all do some research tonight and tomorrow and just make sure that we word it correctly and know exactly what we would be considering. That's unreasonable.
Yeah, it's presently on the agenda for tomorrow. Obviously you can pull that off at any time. If that's, if that's, you know, inconsistent with UDO. But as it stands today, the published agenda has it as number B for tomorrow.
It's on the consent agenda though, Harden.
Yes, sir. Right. So just give us direction, how you'd like to handle it.
I don't think you can leave it on the consent agenda.
Okay.
I think we need to clarify that what is on the consent agenda, David, maybe you're getting ready to speak to this, is to set the date of public hearing for the city code changes that we were trying to synchronize with the public hearing that's already set for tomorrow night on the UDO changes. That's done automatically due to the UDO. Did I confuse that more? I'm trying to make it, trying to clarify.
So we have another item we're going to discuss after this, which is the UDO changes related to what Chad will talk about.
Well, I tell you, I have a thought here. Let's, you know, we can go back and forth. Let's, let's let staff take a look at this and, you know, figure out what, you know, what we've required to do and we'll move forward, you know, based on our recommendations.
It appears to me that we all may be a refresher on the UDO because I'm hearing the staff and council members are a little bit confused. So maybe Huffman can become the expert on this and can be our mediator as we try to figure out what the UDO is saying.
Normally we try to move things forward in a timely manner. It's not often that we try to bureaucratically delay things. So this is a new, new one for us. Burlington is usually pretty efficient at moving things.
Yeah, we just don't want, we don't want to misspeak. It's, you know, it's something we need to check. But Nolan was correct. The city code item is what we had requested for the public hearing.
Yeah.
But we'll check and we'll check and see what the UDO requires.
All right. So on the chicken foul ordinance, we want to, we do not currently have that on tomorrow's agenda for any type of public hearing set, correct? All right. So if, to Councilmember Ward's point, do we want to have a new business item simply called chicken foul ordinance tomorrow? And staff can bring us a recommendation prior to the 7:00 PM meeting as to if we are procedurally required to have a public hearing within two weeks. And then we'll take action as needed. Does that sound reasonable?
I think it's sufficiently confused enough, we can stop now.
I'm fine moving on to UDO stuff because we'll get Mike on that too. So it's, it's fine.
This is not my topic, not my item, but I will tell you that if you have not provided public notice for the text amendment for the UDO, then you don't need to have a public hearing. There's no temporal requirement in the regulations that you act on a text amendment recommendation from planning board. Rather, you know, what's driving your timing is the provision of public notice. So if you have not noticed a public hearing for consideration of the UDO text amendment, then you need not hold the public hearing. So from the UDO side of the House, that's, that's, that's the answer there. Town code, something else.
From the P and Z process side.
Right. From P and Z, you know, their, their meeting was a public meeting. It was not a public hearing. So, you know, again, if you haven't advertised, then you're under no requirement to conduct a hearing. And I don't believe you've advertised for UDO amendment for the chicken regulations.
All right. Unless there's any other comments on that, we will bring further clarity in days to come. All right. Mike and Chad, you want to bring us home with the last item?
Yes, this is just a continuation that we're trying every quarter or so to look at amendments to, as we do development in the city. Things do arise. We get feedback from developers and citizens. So this is a much shorter amendment request, but some key items that we think are very important and that came from some development activity in the city. So I'll turn that over to Chad.
Thanks, Mike. If I could share my screen.
Scott, if you can get Chad as a co-host. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody see that?
Got your screen.
That slide? I have a very, as Mike mentioned, it's a very, very quick one. Thanks for the opportunity to, to talk with you. UDOTA 121, five basic concepts. And as I mentioned before, it's a symptom of the success that you guys are having. Basically, we're looking to make redevelopment easier in the CBD district. We want to encourage more use mixing. That's weird. I've never had feedback. We want to change the density rounding rules from rounding down to rounding up, amend the definition of a family. And a couple more minor clarification pieces. As I mentioned earlier, we did go to P and Z on the 25th of January. They recommended approval of these revisions unanimously. So I'm going to just talk very, very quickly. In the CBD district, to facilitate reuse of existing buildings, there's been a lot of applications for people to come and seek to reuse existing buildings without making a lot of changes. And we wanted to make sure that there weren't any roadblocks to that kind of activity. So what we would propose be done is increase the density for mixed use and multifamily, remove the open space requirements and ease the setback provisions for renovation or occupation of existing structures without any major changes. We'd like to allow ground floor residential to the side or to the rear as part of a live work or a mixed use upper story residential kind of a development. So again, kind of easing our ability to accommodate new uses in the CBD district. Finally, exempting renovation from the mixed use design standards and the multifamily design standards. Renovation again being activity that's happening solely within the inside of the structure, not necessarily making it any bigger, not necessarily adding any additional parking or anything like that, but rather a fit up inside to accommodate apartments or something of that nature. So really trying to simplify and expedite reuse of existing structures. So that's the first big area.
Chad, on that area, just verified. So that is only on renovation, not new construction?
That's correct. New construction is still subject to all of the applicable requirements.
Okay. Yeah, things like the open space, I think are a good fit for construction. But obviously when you're in an existing shell and you're limited by that structure, it can make it unduly challenging. And I also wanted to clarify on the residential first floor, that does not allow for a residential use on the front street facing side of that structure. It still tries to keep that commercial retail.
You're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. The idea is that there still be some sort of non-residential presence on the street of the architectural front of the building. Though you could have a residential doorway or something of that nature. We're still, we're trying to thread the needle here and keep a non-residential activity on the, on the front of the first floor. But recognize that given how the building might be constructed, it might be necessary for a small portion of that ground floor to be given over to residential activity. So we're trying to find a balance there.
Very good. Yeah, I wanted to make sure we didn't lose that street activation portion.
Um, any other questions on making renovation and occupation of existing buildings in CBD district easier? Okay. Along those lines, we want to encourage and simplify mixed using, use mixing in general. And so to do that, we have adjusted, made similar adjustments to the ground floor configuration requirements and the mixed use standards and the mixed use definitions. Again, trying to give ourselves a little bit more flexibility in terms of accommodating ground floor residential activity while at the same time preserving that street activation that comes at the front of the building. So a couple of changes to some definitions and a little bit of clarification about ground floor configuration in the mixed use design standards. Okay. Density rounding, a couple of very small changes, but some very interesting and beneficial results. This portion of the ordinance on page 8-13 is in the rules of measurement. It sets down how we calculate density and the allowable number of units. We are suggesting a minor revision to the, to the text with some ramifications. And that, that is, in the density calculation process, instead of rounding downwards to the next lowest number of, whole number of units, we're suggesting that instead going forward, density calculations be rounded upwards. So that in this instance, in the example that you see in the middle of the page, the lot is 1.19 acres, the density is 1.08 units per acre. That would yield 1.28 total density. Under the current regulations, you'd be limited to one residential unit. We are suggesting through upward rounding that that be allowed to increase to two. So this is a couple of minor adjustments, but has some ramifications citywide in terms of density calculation. Again, densification, taking opportunities to make the most of our infrastructure investments.
Makes sense. Any questions on that?
Minor change to the family definition. The current family definition references household servants. For a variety of reasons, we felt that language probably could be removed without any serious impact to the standards. And also we are suggesting increasing the total number of allowable unrelated persons living within a single housekeeping unit from the current number of two to a new number of three. So increasing in a, in a small way, the number of unrelated individuals who can occupy a single household unit, kind of in recognition of some societal changes that we're all seeing now.
Chad, on this one, when reviewing the agenda packet and doing some research, this one jumped out to me as what looks like relatively minor. But in doing some digging, I came across some articles from Yale Law Journal and Urban Law Institute and some other folks. And I was curious, kind of from your experience in code, there's, there's a lot of emphasis on cities getting out of the regulation of what a formal family is. And this is one of those where it's a definition. It would seem relatively harmless, but it has the ability to be applied and the city hand of government coming in and saying, well, we don't think you're a family because you don't fit the standard black and white definition of a family. Recognizing in society that families should be about a functional family. It should serve the needs of the family. And it shouldn't necessarily be somewhat arbitrarily defined by government. And I was curious, in your experiences, did we go far enough in adapting this definition of family? Or are we still, I mean, we don't use the term union in here to recognize civil union or an unmarried couple. Are we still doing ourselves a disservice and undermining families in our community?
Sure. It's a great question. And there's a, there's a policy foundation that you're alluding to that's a little bit beyond the scope of, of, you know, myself and us changing around your regulations to make sure that they operate better. Often, we see these kinds of family definitions have the greatest efficacy in resort areas, in areas that have a university or some sort of draw that would bring lots and lots of unrelated individuals into individual housekeeping units over a long period of time. And that, we've seen, we have evidence that, you know, multitudes of unrelated individuals living in housekeeping units puts a lot of pressure on the streets. It puts a lot of pressure on the police. It puts a lot of pressure on the neighbors. And it's for those reasons that you typically see these kinds of, of family definitions embedded in a set of development regulations. However, you know, the point that you make, which is what is a family? Is it the purview of the city of Burlington to make those calls? Probably not. I think the intention of the family definition, the intention of the standards wasn't to exclude, wasn't to apply a particular philosophy or worldview. Rather, it was to manage impacts that we know can be problematic, particularly in, in single family residential neighborhoods. Like all of your development regulations, they're complaint-based enforcement. And I think, you know, my suggestion to you would be, if you're still concerned about this approach or this definition, see if this change makes a tangible difference in terms of people's lives and your ability to operate your regulation. If it doesn't, you know, I don't know that, that there's too much to worry about. Certainly, we're moving in the right direction. If your current regulation limited it to two unrelated persons, then I think you could deduce that raising that to three would be more in keeping with the direction our society's headed. Could you go further? Sure. That's a policy matter. We'd want to talk about it. We'd want to think about it. We want a little bit of research on it. You, there is a valid public purpose for regulating family size. And it is about maintaining the, you know, the expectations about a single family neighborhood and what that means. That is, that's a valid purpose and it comes, that expectation comes, you know, from a property purchaser. So to make a very long-winded answer very short, it's a policy matter. Three is pretty much in keeping where, with what a lot of communities are doing now. You could go further or outright remove this, but I think you want to give that some thought before you do so.
Yeah, I definitely don't know that I'm comfortable with removing it. I see why it would be effective in being able to draw a line and define something of that when we use the term single family or multifamily and defining units. And in reading through some of those articles, a lot of the cities they were pointing to were saying, please go up from two to at least three. So as you pointed out, we're headed in the right direction. But I just wanted to kind of raise that conversation.
It's a great point. And I'll mention, but you know, in case anybody else has any comments, this, this is a notoriously difficult provision to enforce. And it's going to be whether it's, you know, three or 10 or 100. I mean, those numbers are just difficult to enforce. That comes with the territory.
So, so I'm, I'm in favor of the red line additions as, as currently put with kind of a hope that if for some reason an issue arises or the community wishes for us to go further on this, that they could let us know and it could be included in future discussions. But council, any other questions or comments on that? All right.
One more topic very, very quickly. And again, the theme of tonight is mixed use and making occupancy of existing structures easier and clarification. We, we wanted to just clarify that the language that we and clarification. We, we wanted to just clarify that the, the language that we had listed in the H D R district standards for density and lot area and map and and lot coverage was a little confusing. And so we are suggesting we go from none or N A to unlimited or none, just to help clarify what the standards are and to bring a little bit more uniformity in in terms of street setbacks and side setbacks. So that's one clarification. And the last one is extremely simple. We just had a couple of extra errant words left in the sentence that there was probably a, an edit to this at some point in the drafting process, and we never got back to actually deleting the text that's shown in blue. Those are all of the changes. Again, pretty, pretty easy. We have a recommendation of approval by Planning and Zoning Commission and assuming you're comfortable would suggest that this be advertised for public hearing on the sixteenth of February.
Very good. Council, any questions? We have two other public hearings. Potentially for, or sorry, one consent agenda, public hearing for the sixteenth. The agenda is potentially on the sixteenth. So do we want this on the sixteenth as well? Or do you want to pick a different date?
I I'd suggest a different date. Is there any particular rush, Chad, as far as rolling it out? Okay.
Because we could put on the March second meeting if necessary. Any objection to setting that as the date of public hearing tomorrow?
I think that'd be fine.
Okay. All right. So add this to our consent agenda tomorrow to set a date of public hearing for March second for these U D O updates.
Chad, if you could go back to the, to the part of this, of your discussion concerning the residential access or what you would allow coming in the front door of of a facility and in that, in the was on an area. And you said obviously a front door. So technically, give us an example of what would work and what would not work.
Okay. So imagine you had a two story building that had a storefront on the front of it. So it had maybe some, some plate glass windows and a single door that might be situated. You know, just in the, in the middle of the building facade. Okay. So that, picture that. Somebody might wish to come in and redevelop, renovate that building, keep a portion of the building in commercial activity, but then also put a corridor to a downstairs apartment at the back of the building. And the only way that they could access that residential portion would be through a separate doorway. So what you might see in terms of a renovation here is the inclusion of a new doorway somewhere within that storefront portion of the structure that allows the residents on the ground floor at the back of the building to get to their unit. So that would be a permissible exercise. Make that non-residential storefront a little narrower, put in a second door that served that downstairs unit. That would be permissible. What would not be permissible would be to grab that whole first floor storefront and turn that into a dwelling unit. That would not be consistent with with the rules. There needs to be some kind of commercial presence on the street. The gray area, if you will, is whether or not they could put in access to a commercial activity or a non-residential activity that happens on the ground floor that you have to actually enter the door and go down a corridor to get to. In other words, can I see the non-residential activity from the sidewalk? And I think that's something that we'd have to think about on a case by case basis. I don't think that the standards prohibit that, but I think that's definitely something that staff would want to consider carefully. Does that action where we've really reduced that what used to be a storefront to now just a doorway? Does that have a negative impact on street presence? And that's something to think about.
So to technically, in a perfect world, in a lot of these buildings that this could relate to is if you had a back door, which was required by code then, if that could be the entrance for the dwelling,
Yes.
then that would work out just fine, wouldn't it?
It absolutely would. Or a side door if it's a corner building. Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Chad, it also enables that front walk up door like we see in many historic buildings. There's a main entrance to the first floor and there's a small side door that's a walk up to your second floor uses.
Right. Very typical. And those are great for offices, but you know, we, somebody may decide they want to want to try to put a residential unit on that second floor, and we should encourage that. That's a good thing for downtown.
So they'd be able to put that access door anywhere on the first floor.
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Any other council questions on these U D O items? All right. Chad, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you very much.
Mike, anything else you've got?
Not this time.
All right. Well, that concludes our regular agenda items. Manager, any comments?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
All right, council, any other comments before we adjourn? All right. We appreciate everyone sticking with us. We had a lively meeting tonight and we will see everyone back here at seven o'clock tomorrow evening. Take care. Happy evening, everyone.
Everybody.
Thank you.